Everyone, everyone good? Yeah? Okey dokey. I call this, what it is, January 2nd, right? I call this January 2nd, 2022, special meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Campley?
Here.
Mr. Dorr? Mrs. Evans-Brackett?
Here.
Mr. Fountain? Mr. Keenan? Dr. Caller?
Here.
Mrs. Smears?
Here.
Mr. Saylor?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
All right, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one which should be under our own individual and liberty as well.
Okay, before public comment, I just would like to remind everybody that this meeting is for the school board to have, the public is here. It's for the public to listen to, the public has an opportunity, they'll get three minutes to talk at the podium, we ask that everyone in attendance please respect the rules and mandates of the school board and the school district at this time. We ask that when someone is speaking, you give them the courtesy of letting them get through their up to three minutes of time without any side comments. And just remember that this is a professional meeting, so we would like everyone to be professional at all times. We're gonna first start with the public comments that were sent in to the board before 6:30, and I'm gonna ask Mrs. Smears to read those comments. And those comments will still have the same three-minute running timer.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. First comment is Mrs. Donna Muscatello Lower Frederick. As a district employee and district taxpayer, I am strongly encouraging that all of the school board members approve Dr. Russell's recommendation to extend the district mask mandate to at least January 21st. This shift to requiring masks for a few more weeks is based on updates to quarantine and isolation rules per the Montgomery County of Office of Public Health and a strong desire to keep students in school as well as maintain the health and safety of all. Thank you. Jeff Hilbert, Perkyomenville. My name is Jeff Hilbert, and I've been a resident of Perkyomenville for the past 20 years. I have two children in Perkyoma Valley High School, I have been a registered nurse for the past 25 years, and the last 20 of those years have been in an emergency room, which is where I currently work. I am currently concerned about unmasking kids in our schools in our current public health conditions. As someone who has worked for 25 years in a hospital, I can tell you that our local hospitals are overwhelmed with the current volume of sick patients as well as the strain COVID is placing on them. Hospital staff are exhausted and many of my coworkers are out ill with COVID, making it even more difficult. Temple University Hospital will once again erect a tent outside to manage this COVID surge. Area hospitals are again stopping elective surgeries and will utilize that staff elsewhere in the hospital. Many of our hospitals are diverting ambulances to other hospitals because they cannot handle the patients they already have. For the first time in the 25 years that I have been a nurse, we have had over 80 patients in the emergency room waiting room, and the wait times to see a doctor are six to 12 hours. I have family and friends working at Temple Health, Jefferson Health, and Mainline Health, which are some of the biggest hospital systems in our area, and the conditions are the same at all of these hospital systems. Trust me, no one wants this COVID to be over more than people working in healthcare right now. We are tired and exhausted, but the reality is, with only 60% of the population vaccinated, we may never reach herd immunity. This may keep cycling, and new variants will continue to emerge. That's why I am advocating to continue having kids in school wear masks during this current surge. I want my kids back in school as well, but I want them in a safe environment. Nothing is 100% effective, just like seat belts in a car. You are not guaranteed to survive a car crash just because you have it on, but if I am in a car accident, I'd rather have it on than the risky alternative. Masks are the only thing we have as healthcare workers to keep us protected while we are exposed every day. When I go to work tomorrow, I will no doubt be face-to-face with a COVID-positive patient, and the only thing separating me from them is a mask. This is a worldwide public health issue, not a political one. Every county in the world is facing challenges due to COVID. Dr. Offit, an infection-disease doctor at CHOP recommends kids wear masks in school. Think what your child's pediatrician would recommend in regards to masks and vaccines. Think about not only yourself, but the community as a whole. Mask up, vaccinate, booster, and work together to keep our community safe and our hospitals functioning. Please vote to keep our community safe. Wade Weston, Collegeville Borough. On December 12th, prior to your last business meeting, the incidence of COVID infections in PV was 323 per 100,000. In Monco, the incidence was 284 per 100,000. As of last Wednesday, December 29th, the incidence in PV was 328 per 100,000 and 457 per 100,000 in Monco. Transmission in PV in the county remain at high levels and are comparable to levels seen last year at this time. With transmission levels this high, it is no time to be considering changing our masking policy. So-called mask choice will greatly complicate contact tracing efforts and increase the risk of linked transmission of the COVID virus in the schools, inevitably leading to a return to virtual instruction, which no one wants. Most of you have been on this board since the beginning of the COVID pandemic, you know what the issues are, you know what the risks are, and you know that what this district has been doing has been effective in preventing COVID transmission in the schools. Yet at your last business meeting, a majority of you voted to change course on masking. This decision ignores the advice and recommendations of medical and public health experts in the experience of the last year. In addition, you've done exactly what many in the community were concerned that the previous board would do. You've thrown out the administration's carefully-considered action plan in favor of your own plan, put together on the spur of the moment. This is not responsible governance, this is board overreach. As a community member, I urge you to adopt the changes to the health and safety plan being put forward tonight, reinstating the mask mandate for the time being and pending further considered discussion. Please see the figure. Greg Adam, resident of Perkyom Township. I have a 3rd grade at Evergreen, and I am a scientist at a local pharmaceutical company working in basic research. I implore the school board to continue requiring masking during the school day until the end of January or until the current surge in infections subsides. At my company, we are required to be vaccinated, masked, and maintain social distancing as a way to continue to deliver medicines and vaccines to the patients that need them. Everything is set up to continue to deliver on this mission of getting medicines to the patients. As a school system, the mission is to educate children and enable that education. Having as many children in the classroom as possible to learn is the pipeline you need to protect. With the current infectivity of the Omicron variant, changes to the quarantine requirements, and the lack of substitute teachers, it is imperative the school board to take measures to protect the education pipeline. The best way to do that during the surge is to continue to have masking in place. The board also needs to take in consideration the health and safety of the students. Most cases are less severe with Omicron, however, different children will have susceptibilities which may result in more severe cases, hospitalization, and potentially death within our district, the students you are responsible for. I understand that the majority have run under a masking-choice campaign, but please do not play politics with my child's safety and education and those of her classmates. We are all looking forward to the day where masking is no longer an issue, but now is not the time. Angela Weber, Skipback Township. Dr. Russell and board members, I'd like to thank you for devoting your time to our school district. This relates to the current health and safety plan decision. As a concerned parent of two PV students in Skipback Township, I am hopeful that you will vote to follow Dr. Russell's proposal at the special meeting you are at tonight. Following these simple mitigation measures will be our best chance at curbing any educational disruption to our students in the district during the surge of a highly contagious variant of COVID in the community. Many, if not most, of our students in the district will now need to quarantine for five days or longer per the new guidelines. Finding a test is proving more and more difficult, emergency rooms are seeing six- or 12-hour wait times, now is the time to protect our students, staff, and community. I'm sure the goal for all the members of the board is to do everything possible to ensure our schools stay open and our students' experience as little disruption as possible. Nothing is 100% effective, but just like we wear seat belts in our cars just in case, we should take every precaution and mitigation strategy afforded to us to try our best to mitigate further spread of this virus, especially now that numbers are surging again. Voting to make mandatory masks a requirement until at least the third week in January, as Dr. Russell recommended, should hopefully allow our children to remain in person for learning. It will help protect our staff and help mitigate spread to our community. Removing a layer of protection that has been working well for our district at this time is not a decision that should be taken lightly. Please reconsider your vote to support Dr. Russell's revised plan. Jen and Andrew Gray, Perkyom Township. We have two children in PV, one at Evergreen and one at Middle School East, we are ready to urge you to please approve the proposed health and safety plan and maintain the mask mandate at least through January 21st. The Omicron variant is far more contagious than previous ones, cases have skyrocketed to the highest levels they've ever been. In Montgomery County, daily reported cases are now 137.5 for 100,000 and have increased an incredible 173% in the last two weeks and are likely much higher than that given the widespread use of home tests. On top of this, families have been traveling and socializing over the holidays, and we are very concerned that bringing everyone back into the buildings with masks being optional will result in an outbreak that will leave no choice but to close the schools again. This pandemic has sadly been so polarizing, but I think we can all agree that the kids do far better in-person school than in virtual school. I urge you to please prioritize keeping schools open, and to do this, let's use every tool we have. Vaccines are a key part of the equation, but the COVID vaccines are not perfect at preventing infection. Masks are also not perfect, however, they add another layer of protection, especially during times of high transmission like we are in now. I know this board will not want to close schools again, but if too many staff and students are sick or quarantined, there will be no choice. Just today, Lower Marion School District delayed the return to school after break to assess if they had enough personnel to staff schools. We are also exhausted from this pandemic and are eager to get back to normal, however, we urge you that now is not the time to drop one of our layers of protection when the cases are the highest they've ever been. Please maintain the mask mandate during this time of incredibly high transmission. Thank you for your consideration. Jackie Lichtenstein, Skipback Township. As a concerned parent, I'm ready to ask the board to seriously consider implementing Dr. Russell's proposal to the health and safety plan and continue the mask mandate until January 21st or until the county numbers come down. We need the mask mandate to remain in place to help mitigate the rising numbers in our community. We all want our child to remain in school, and the only way to do that is to keep the masks on during school until community transmission rates drop significantly. With the spread so high, we risk the teachers being out sick, and with low to no substitutes, learning will be severely impacted. If the goal is truly to keep the kids in school, then the masks must stay on until the numbers come down. Thank you. Patty Schuler, Collegeville Borough. I'm thrilled there is a meeting tonight to discuss a change, the shift of the district's mask mandate. I apologize that I can't attend the meeting, but wanted to let you know my opinion on the matter. My kids are freshmen and senior in PV High School. Personally, I was not supportive of the original shift from masks being required to highly recommended. While I know everyone is tired of masks and of COVID in general, the fact is that the numbers are going back up due to the Omicron variant, and not just up, but to the highest levels ever since COVID even started. I cannot even enumerate how many people I know are testing positive in recent weeks. It is absolutely rampant, all over but definitely in our area. My daughter has extreme anxiety and is a nervous wreck at the possibility of going back to school tomorrow with a large number of students and others going maskless. Therefore, I strongly support a change in this policy to one of two options. Either go back to masks required in school buildings and buses, or go fully virtual for several weeks until we can see how the numbers shift after the holidays. It is absolutely reckless and senseless to allow masks to be removed at this time. There's no data that suggests it is safe to lessen safeguards right now. For those people that don't want masks, most also were extremely adamant about keeping their kids in school. But if we remove masks now and see cases climb, the result will be that we have to go back to virtual, thereby defeating the goal, especially at this time where it is so difficult to get tested because of the high numbers. It is not feasible to safely lower our defenses. You have all worked so hard for almost two years to keep our kids back in the building. Please continue to think about their safety and education first, and please vote to require masks or go virtual until it is safe to do otherwise. Thank you. Stephanie Nash, Perkyom Township. Parent of a high school and a middle school East student. As the time to reevaluate the masking order for Perkyoma Valley is drawing near, I would ask that you please carefully reconsider the mask optional rule. This week, an average of 1,143 cases per day was reported in Montgomery County. With this knowledge, it would be irresponsible to make masks optional. Our number-one priority should be keeping our schools open. In making masks only highly recommended, I fear that our cases will increase among students and teachers to a point where we will have no option but to be virtual. As a teacher in a neighboring district where masks are optional, I saw 45 cases in three short days before Christmas at our high school alone. In addition, we had to hold a virtual day as a result of cases and sub shortages. I do not want to see the same thing occurring in PVSD. Please vote to require masks until the surge has decided. Thank you. Janine and Bill Kelly, Perkyom Township. Parents of PV West students. I ask you to keep the mask mandate in place for an additional two weeks ending on March, January 17th. Prior to Monday, January 17th, I suggest the school board reconvene to determine if it is safe at that time to allow students and teachers to go without masks. Wearing a mask is a small sacrifice to keep the kids in school. Several scholarly peer-reviewed journal articles in the CDC have evidence supporting decreased transmission with mask use. In addition, with the new CDC and Montgomery County mask requirements, it would be nearly impossible for the school district to enforce masking for those exposed recovering versus not. We also request the board consider teacher-led virtual learning if masking is not required as we believe many students and teachers will have to quarantine. Thanks for your consideration and all you are doing. Christine Hamilton, Skipback. I'm reaching out to express my concern regarding the drastic rise in COVID cases since the school board voted to make masks optional starting January 3rd. At the time, I honestly didn't think it was unreasonable to consider masks optional sometime in January, but I was concerned things might change over the break, and it's clear they have. I would like to believe that if you took the vote today and considered the current COVID climate, you would absolutely keep the mask mandate to help ensure the safety of our students and to help keep those students in school. I urge you to consider the lack of substitutes our district was experiencing before the break, and imagine how that will play out once more teachers start getting COVID and have to isolate at home. Just prior to the break, my daughter's 5th-grade class had the technology teachers or sub available, and a different class was combined with another class because their teacher had a meeting. How would that scenario work with masks optional, required contact tracing, and a highly contagious new variant? It's clear the next month will be tricky, and now is not the time to remove a layer of protection. In fact, if anything, the school district should be sending home a better-quality mask to help protect each student. This letter is not because I'm terrified of my kids getting COVID. This letter is because I'd like my kids to be able to stay in school, and although masks are not the entire solution, they have been part of the solution. They have helped reduce the number of students and teachers required to quarantine due to contact tracing. Now is not the time to remove something that could help PV remain in person for as long as possible. There's no denying things have changed over the break. Please take the new information and increased cases into account and make the responsible choice to follow Dr. Russell's proposal in an attempt to keep our schools open. Thank you for your time. Leslie Seier, Lower Frederick. As a parent of a student at the high school, I request that you reverse the mask order that's supposed to take place tomorrow until the rise in cases drops drastically. Masks are crucial to helping stop and/or slow the spread of this virus. I know firsthand how quickly it can spread in a short amount of time if masks are not worn properly. I ask that you review the current state of the community as the cases rise drastically with those who are unvaccinated and vaccinated. Learning cannot take place if students and staff are sick and at home. Knowing that those family members will also take the virus home also is a concerning matter. Please keep our students healthy and safe while they are in school. Removing masks does not keep them or their family members or your staff safe. Thank you for your time. Megan Maron, Collegeville Borough resident, PVSD parent of three. I am asking that you follow the recommendation of Dr. Russell to keep our mandatory masking policy in place for the next few weeks. With students and teachers coming back from holiday break and positivity rates being higher than ever, keeping this proven mitigation measure in place is crucial. Keeping masks on during the surge will not only help protect our students and staff from getting severely ill or worse, but will also help to preserve in-person learning and avoid having to go virtual. I teach in the Souderton area school district, and even we are going back to mandatory masking starting tomorrow. I ask that you vote in the interest of the health and safety of our students, staff, and community, and keep our masking mandate in place. Thank you for your consideration. Karen Lynch, Skipback. I am not attending in person tonight because I do not trust that safety protocols such as mask-wearing will be adhered to by many in attendance. I hope I am wrong. This board must use science and facts and a bit of good common sense to ensure the safety of students, educators, and staff in our school district. We can all find information that supports our individual opinions, but during these times, it is important to look at the volume of data from experts such as scientists, public health experts, and the medical community, especially pediatricians. I have learned from such experts by reading and listening that Omicron is impacting more children because it attacks the upper respiratory area versus the other strains. It has impacted young children especially, and hospitalizations are up in this category. So I would compel you to think about the entire family. Do we want school-aged kids bringing this home to younger siblings? Do we want teachers bringing this home to their families? Getting sick with this strain is especially hard on children with chronic respiratory issues like asthma. We all know kids like this. We also know from experience that there will be a huge wave in the coming weeks because of holiday gatherings. I believe there is absolutely no downside, repeat, no downside, to protecting families as we move into this critical post-holiday timeframe. It's a little like when I say to myself, "I'm only two minutes from home, do I really need to connect the seatbelt?" I connect it every time because there is no downside to doing it. Universal masking until January 21st during the school day should be the bare minimum requirement. This board can always meet again to assess the post-holiday wave. It's what we expect from our school board, to meet as needed, to act with urgency, to consider facts, to listen to us, and to one another, and most of all, to keep our school community, and in this case, the community at large, safe during these challenging times. One last thing. Everyone on this board is an equal, all members are expected to contribute and be heard. No one person is the authority. Strength comes to those who listen more than they talk and to those who influence with compassion, intelligence, and respect. Changing one mind based on having listened to others and after thoughtful consideration of facts and data isn't a weakness, it is a sign of true leadership. I implore you to show true leadership on this issue. Thank you. Vanessa Bellino, Perkyom Township. I am writing as a parent of a high school student, I am asking that the board follow Dr. Russell's recommendation that students and staff mask up for the next few weeks to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. My understanding is that our positivity rate here in Montgomery County has skyrocketed over the last two weeks. I want to make sure that we keep our kids in the classroom. Given the highly infectious nature of the most recent variant, masking is our best way to mitigate infection. We are also trying to use rapid testing and PCR testing, but tests have been hard to come by, and wait times at ERs and urgent care are four to five hours. Masking is the easiest thing we can do to keep the kids in school and keep students and staff healthy. I appreciate your consideration. Kathy LaSage, Skipback, two children in PVSD. I strongly support Dr. Russell's proposal to continue mandatory mask use during the school day from the return from winter break tomorrow, Monday, January 3rd, through at least January 21st. I can attest to the rapid spread of COVID during the school break, as both of my children have friends with COVID-positive people in their households. Even if COVID cases were no worse than a cold or flu, with easy transmission and rapid spread, we are at a risk of having large numbers of students and teachers absent from class. If we do not take any mitigation measures, if our goal is truly to keep as many kids as possible healthy and in school, I urge the board to continue the mask mandate until the post-holiday surge of infections has dissipated. Thank you. Michael Sincheck, Schwenksville. Given the situation in Pennsylvania, that COVID cases, especially number of pediatric cases, has doubled in the recent weeks, and hospitalization has gone up, and it takes up to five to seven days to even get the appointment for COVID testing, has the board considered the idea to do all virtual for a week or two, especially for the elementary schools since vaccines for this age group become available just a few months back? For how long the unvaccinated kids need to be quarantined, and how will the schooling continue for those kids? Amanda O'Brien, Skipback Township. I wanted to make my family's voices heard at tonight's meeting. I attended the last open board meeting in December, and I was not opposed to lifting the mask mandate on January 3rd based on the number of cases that were in the area at that time. Is that the same? Is it a repeat? As cases have multiplied excessively over the last two weeks, I know several people in the district who currently have COVID, both vaccinated and unvaccinated. I no longer feel that masks should be optional for the students at PVSD until the numbers go down to a manageable rate. Although I understand that most people are not dying from this disease, there are lasting repercussions of the virus that are not fully known yet. My son had COVID over the summer, and thankfully he made a full recovery. However, I do not want to risk him getting the virus a second time, not knowing the long-term side effects of the disease. My son is fully vaccinated, and he will be wearing a mask to school until the numbers go down. This will not protect him unless others in his classes are masked. I strongly urge the board to consider continuing the mask mandate until the numbers fall to a reasonable rate. I realize that everyone is tired of wearing masks, myself included. However, for the greater good, specifically for all of the immune-compromised students and staff, we need to take the proper measures to ensure that our classrooms are safe. Thank you for your consideration. Wendy Ledford, Schwenksville Elementary Secretary. I'm writing this evening requesting you to go forward as previously voted on to have masking strongly recommended and not mandatory for all school settings. Please allow your family, school employees, and visitors the freedom to choose what is best for them. The Omicron variant is highly contagious, but is also causing less serious illness and will most likely bring us to herd immunity in the near future. We, as a school district, have done more than we ever thought we could since March of 2020. It's now time for us to stand strong and go forward as originally decided back in December. Please don't allow fear to rule the day, we are PV-strong. Val Drury, Skipback Township. Thank you to Dr. Russell for calling this meeting. On 12/31, Skipback Pharmacy alone performed 500 COVID tests for our area. Again, thank you, Dr. Russell, for extending the high school grounds to Dr. Mack of Skipback Pharmacy to continue his grand work to protect and service our community needs. Skipback Pharmacy held a clinic on December 29th, and then another is pending for January 5th for second doses of the COVID vaccine for five-to-11-year-olds. Between those two clinics, 735 children will have their second dose. That means that full vaccine effectiveness will not be until mid-January. Also, the FDA should be approving boosters for 12- to 15-year-olds, and again, their two-week mark will be mid-January. As I have commented previously, an end date of 1/3/22 does not offer these students an efficient opportunity to be protected. It is impossible at this time to not have heard of someone within your circle of a recent diagnosis of COVID after the holiday break. To end the mask mandate during a time of heightened positivity could potentially result in catastrophic consequences. Teacher shortage, need for virtual learning. Think about it in this way. When your teenage driver wants to take a drive with some friends down the shore, they have been awarded a license by the state, you feel they are a good driver, however, you know that the weather will be dangerous because a hurricane is coming, and you know bad rain will be happening as they are driving on the expressway. Do you let them go because you know they will be mad or sad if you deny them the ability to go? Or do you protect them and not let them go so to keep them safe? You talk to your teenager and explain that you are not saying no, but rather not just right now because of the storm. COVID is the hurricane in this story, the school board is the parent, the board must be the ones to say "not just yet" with ending mask mandate. Leslie Connor, Skipback Township. It's sad to divide kids into two groups as well with the mask mandate. They imitate their parents and often parrot their political differences. Although it should have never been made a political issue, but rather a public health issue, especially after a holiday, we are just inviting more community spread. I've even heard of incidents of anti- I've even heard of incidents of anti-maskers coughing at those wearing masks. Making masks mandatory takes away any perceived stigma for children. It also diminishes the possibility of both children and teachers, along with their families, being unnecessarily exposed. We can revisit this issue in a month or two and hopefully things will have gotten better, not worse, by then, but let's help make that happen and we can get past this all together. Thank you. Stephanie Glover, Perkyomen Township, and Courtney Meringo, Skipback. We are writing to you tonight as parents of PV students, community members, and employees of Skipback Pharmacy. As many of you know, we have been working tirelessly with our amazing volunteers since February 2021 to vaccinate and now assist in COVID testing the community to keep our kids in school. First, we want to publicly thank Dr. Russell for graciously allowing Skipback Pharmacy to run our COVID testing site at the high school this past Friday. We successfully tested over 300 community members with little complications and delays. We are so grateful for her generosity in helping us out last minute. We would also like to thank you all for coming together tonight at this meeting to discuss and review Dr. Russell's proposal to the Health and Safety Plan. The increased need for COVID testing has been draining on our staff and volunteers, many of whom have now contracted COVID themselves. Seeing as how easily this new variant is transmissible and the number of positives we are seeing daily at the pharmacy alone with a 30% positivity rate, it is concerning that we are removing mitigations in school when we return tomorrow. Our community health services are already stretched beyond their means. We are bracing ourselves for an even bigger surge after students and teachers return to school tomorrow. In fact, we had to find a larger location for our testing site to be prepared for this. We are temporarily moving to the central Perkyomen Athletic Fields until our new facility is ready. No one likes wearing a mask, but we do know that wearing one helps with the transmission of COVID. It will also help with the number of students and staff that will need to quarantine and test, which also reduces the amount of contact tracing that our nurses will have to perform. This all leads to keeping our kids in school, in the buildings, in person. Removing masks prematurely will lead to even more teacher and staff shortages, more people in quarantine, and more contact tracing. We ask that you seriously consider Dr. Russell's proposal for reinstating universal masking to not only protect our students and staff, but to also help relieve some of the burden on our local healthcare workers.
Nate, do me a favor. Leave your mask up when you talk and just make sure you say where you're from, what borough.
What borough? All right. My name is Nathan Fisher. I'm from Montgomery County. Is that a borough? I don't know.
Skipback?
Skipback?
Great, thank you.
And I'm a junior here at the high school. I'm here to speak about masking mandate in school and why I think that they should be optional. I'm representing myself, the people here supporting me, and a much larger group of students that couldn't be here tonight because of the short notice of the meeting. I'd like to make my case based on three principles: the legality of mask mandates, our freedom to choose, and mask efficacy. First, according to Phil Klein, a former attorney and state legislator, government officials have used COVID to fundamentally reorder the nature of our government and have violated democratic principles and personal liberties in the process. The Pennsylvania Supreme Court agreed and struck down the school mask mandate. Second, our freedom should consider, should always be considered when discussing public policy. If we have learned anything from history, it's that we have protected the vulnerable, not restricted the healthy. We should continue to do the same today by giving everyone the choice to wear a mask to protect their own health, but not force others to wear one for something they do not fear. My third-
Sir, can you stop the timer? That's okay. We have to make sure the computers stay plugged in so they don't lose power. So- We're listening to them. We got you. You good? Fisher, keep going, bud.
Thank you. Where was I? All right. My third and final point is based on science and the overall efficacy of masks. Multiple sources verify that the size of a COVID particle is approximately 0.06 microns or micrometers. In further research, the best cloth masks with particulate matter 2.5 filters and cannot be considered PPE can filter out particulates as small as 2.5 microns or micrometers. To put that into perspective, the space between each of the fabrics across the surface of a mask is 41.6 times larger than a COVID particle. This does not even include the large gaps around the nose, cheeks, and chin areas that are openly exposed. Overall, it would appear that the efficacy of face masks protecting us against the virus is minimal at best. If we are meeting today based on the recent quarantine guideline changes from the CDC, I have to ask, what has materially changed to call a special meeting? If anything, the reduced quarantine guidelines strongly suggest that the new variants are mild. The change in the CDC's guidelines primarily comes from evidence showing that the transmission occurs in days one through fives of a symptomatically infected person. So, I fail to see the correlation in a mask mandate and the recent change to the CDC guidelines. In the end, myself and the students I am here to represent, hope the board will uphold its most recent vote to give the students our freedom to choose. Thank you for your time.
Sorry, I messed up your last name again.
That's all right. Chad Bookder, Schwenksville District or Township. I kind of find it hard to believe how, from listening to you, Mr. Saylor, the last time I was here, that we met all of these benchmarks. I believe the first was to mask to, you know, kind of flatten out the curve. And then we were waiting to get the vaccines and we got the vaccines and, you know, everybody had the opportunity to get vaccinated, teachers, students, everybody else. There was always that promise or that carrot that everybody was chasing, like, when are we going to have to stop wearing these masks? Not me personally, but the students. So I did my own research once Dr. Russell sent out this last-minute email to have this meeting and, you know, I went to the Department of Health Montgomery County website. They have all of the death numbers posted there. Anybody can go on and look at it. People who have died and what their ages were. They don't post the comorbidities, but they post the ages. Since March of 2020, three people have died, or I'll go with the, you know, the main numbers first. 29 people have died in Perkyomen Valley School District since March of 2020. Three of those lived in trap. The average age was 67. One of those lived in Schwenksville. He was 90, or she was 90. Lower Frederick, two people. Perkyomen Valley, two people. Skipback, 21 people. So for a total of 29 people, none of those individuals were over the age of 25 or under the age of 25. That means no student-age individual has died this entire time in Perkyomen Valley Township. Those are the numbers. That is the science. If you say you're protecting the children and the students, how can you not look at that number? In Pennsylvania, there's been 2 million positive cases. 2 million positive cases. That led to 29 deaths in two years in Perkyomen Valley School District. Right there is all the science that you need to know. Again, the average age range of the person that died in Perkyomen Valley School District, 79 and a half. These numbers are on the Montgomery County Department of Health website. None of them were under the age of 25. So who are you protecting here? Are you protecting the students? Are you protecting yourselves? Are you protecting the institution? As the gentleman that came in last meeting said, that everybody's leaving themselves open for lawsuits. You're all going to get sued. You know, the school district, the school board, everybody's going to get sued. How can you sit here and say that you're protecting the students if none of them have died this entire time? Am I saying that they haven't gotten sick? No. But are they dying? Absolutely not. And those are the numbers in this school district. That's all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Tracy Tweedy, Collegeville Borough. I have two children, Middle School East. First, I want to say I'm happy we're here having a meeting to discuss the updated Health and Safety Plan proposed by Dr. Russell, but I just wish it wasn't happening at the 11th hour before the kids are due to go back to school, potentially maskless tomorrow. This is not how I wanted to be spending the end of my holiday break, but here I am. Last meeting, Mr. Saylor specifically said those who wish to be vaccinated have had the opportunity to do so, but as of the updates that were sent out by Dr. Russell yesterday from the Montco Office of Public Health, my son is no longer considered to be vaccinated. He and many others are now more than six months out from their second doses, but ages 12 to 15 are not yet approved to receive boosters. I know the first step in that approval process is expected to come tomorrow, but that's the first step. We don't know when these children will actually have the chance to receive those boosters. I would ask that the board consider extending the mask requirement until the 12- to 15-year-olds have had a reasonable amount of time to receive their boosters and for the two weeks following. In case you weren't aware, COVID tests are next to impossible to get right now. People are being told to stay home. Teachers are now required to take their sick time if they get COVID. So everyone has to stay home if they have a cough, a sniffle, they just have to assume they have COVID and stay home? How is this conducive to educating our children? Is it more important that the children are physically in school or that they're actually getting an education from their teachers? The parents who want mask choice or parent choice don't seem to understand how respiratory viruses work. Omicron is much more easily transmitted in a shorter amount of time. The more students, teachers, and staff are unmasked, the more quickly this virus could take out entire classrooms or grades. Dr. Russell made a recommendation in December and you ignored her to make a political statement. Please show us that you're capable of receiving new information and acting accordingly. Please show us that you want to fulfill some of your campaign promises to not interfere with the administration as they know best what our district needs. Please show us that you care about these kids and require that they mask for at least until the 21st, as outlined in the Health and Safety Plan. To Dr. Russell and the board members who have supported our students and teachers and voted to keep them safe, please know that you are appreciated more than I can even express. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gillian Tweedy and I'm a sixth-grade student at Middle School East. Before I start my comment, I would ask that everyone could wear their mask correctly and over their nose. At the last board meeting, many of you voted to make masks optional. Though I have reached out many times, many of you still have not given me a justification for why your decisions make sense, so I'm here to bring it to your attention tonight. The one board member who gave me an explanation, Mr. Door, told me his justification that was cloth masks don't work, so I guess we should remove the mandate altogether because of that. Anyone with common sense can understand why that doesn't make sense. I want to explain to you the impacts that your decision has made on me and my classmates. My math class has 29 kids and there really isn't a way to space us out. If one of us gets COVID without masks, almost half of the class or more has a risk of getting sick. I've had many times where I haven't had a sub and an aide had to be the adult in the classroom. That is not a proper education. Imagine how much worse this will be if you remove the mandate. You say you care about our mental health, but our students' mental health isn't going to be good when our teachers are in the hospital, sick or worse. People say kids don't get sick from COVID, but kids aren't the only ones in the building. To those of you who said yes to removing the mask mandate, this is for you. You say you care, but at the end of the day, you make the same decisions and there is no change. You say you care, but when I still don't have a response from my email, it doesn't seem too much like you care. You clearly don't care too much about science and you don't seem to care about our students and teachers. So what do you care about? Please consider these things when voting tonight. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Judy Lofton. I'm a Skipback resident and a parent of a high school student as well as three students who have graduated from PV. Two of my students who have graduated had IEPs. They both struggled terribly with virtual learning and they're not PV students anymore. The decisions that are made tonight here won't affect them, but I know that 16% of the students in PV do have IEPs. And when I was on the board, I heard from many, many parents describing how heart-wrenchingly awful their experiences were in virtual schooling with students who have special needs. My daughter babysat for a family whose son was on the autistic spectrum and she would help the two younger students with their virtual learning. The autistic student was in school most of the time, but when their district went virtual, he had to be assisted by his mother while my daughter was helping the two students in the other room. And he became so violent that my daughter's responsibilities were to just keep the two children safe, keep them away from the sun so that, you know, until the paramedics could come and take him away because the frustration and the lack of control that he experienced from being put into a virtual environment was just so overwhelming to him. And so, my greatest fear about this whole situation isn't the virus. My family's vaccinated and boosted. I think it's inevitable that we're going to get exposed, but my fear is that we're going to wind up going virtual. And my concern is for the families for whom that's going to be a devastating experience. I know when I had shared with Dr. Russell my daughter's experience and she shared with me that she had heard of very similar situations from many families in our district. And I know a lot of them probably aren't here tonight to say how incredibly difficult it is for them if we go virtual, but I think that we need to stop and think about the repercussions of what is going to happen if we're not able to staff our classrooms. I know from my high school student, there are times where a sub just doesn't come to the classroom and they just sit there and play on their phones for a period. Before the situation that we have now, I'm very concerned that if we have too many of our staff out sick, we're not going to have the staff that we need to safely supervise our students. And so, I ask you to seriously consider keeping the mitigation measures in place to do what we can to stay in school. Thank you.
Brianna Hendricks, Schwenksville Elementary. I'd like to start this evening with expressing my gratitude. Thank you for listening and an ending assurance testing for your staff members last month. I also wanted to thank you for the decision to make mask-wearing the choice of your staff and families. I understand we are here tonight to go over that decision and potentially postpone making masks strongly recommended, but up to the individual rather than mandatory. I'm here to ask you to leave the decision in place that was made in December and allow masks to not be mandatory tomorrow. We have had bad flu seasons in the past, but never took drastic measures such as forcing masks on our children. There will always be another variant or virus ahead of us. This is what life is and it is time to start living as individuals feel is best for their families. No one is asking for masks to be removed or banned, just that individuals have the choice to do what they think is best for their health. If families or staff want to wear two masks, they can, but others should be allowed to wear nothing if that is what they feel is best for their health. I do think the majority of people will continue to wear masks. This decision is about giving individuals their rights to their health decisions and having our policies be consistent across the board. Your change in policy is not consistent. All day long, masks are required, yet once the bell rings and we switch to sports and clubs, they are no longer going to be required. Is COVID that smart that it knows that it's before 3:30, so it's allowed to spread? Students are generally kept distanced during the school day. Are clubs and sports keeping our students distanced? This policy is not consistent and does not make sense. Please do not go back to making health decisions for the community and let the individuals make health decisions for what is best for them. Please vote to uphold the decision that was made in December. Thank you.
Amanda Martino, Lower Frederick Township. I request the school board to approve a masking requirement for all schools and school-related activities, as even those-
activities, as even those after-school activities are not immune to exposure and impact in-person learning. As many are away, our area has significant increase in cases over the last two weeks. So many cases, in fact, that Skibek Pharmacy had to relocate testing to the high school to accommodate the large volume of testing being offered by their team. Thanks to the district and for Skibek Pharmacy and all the volunteers who helped assist in this, all the testing efforts in the last couple of weeks. The county and district data does not include data from the at-home test kits. At-home test kits are good, but they require multiple tests over several days to ensure the best accuracy. Most of the common at-home tests date this in their instructions for use that retest should occur 24 to 36 hours after a negative result. Most users take the test and if negative, continue as normal. In other cases, retesting with at-home tests is not occurring as it should because the tests are now almost impossible to secure and numerous retailers have placed limits on purchases because of the test shortages. I personally am aware of several friends and acquaintances who have contracted COVID-19 over the holidays. Either from family who are asymptomatic but presumed a cold, athletic tournaments where masks were required for all but athletes, and from those who took negative result but no retesting occurred, thereby increasing the spread of the virus. Thankfully, vaccination among our acquaintances has helped keep many we know out of the hospital, although we are aware of an unvaccinated otherwise healthy person in their 30s who required hospitalization and time in the ICU just before Christmas. Again, thankfully, that individual is out of the hospital and recovering. Additionally, some local schools in the area are unable to staff the school because of the rise in case counts. St. Mary's Roman Catholic School in Swansville will be virtual for the week of January 3rd with the hope to return in person as soon as possible. They haven't closed at all. Well, they closed around Thanksgiving, but last year they were open the entire year. Masking, vaccination, and testing are the tools we have in our current toolbox and it takes all three to make the system work best. While we have done well as a community getting vaccinated, testing shortages will require us to use other tools at our disposal or toolbox and masks are the best tool we have right now. By requiring masks at all levels, we help staff, students, and faculty are as safe as possible in the current circumstances we find our community in. Thank you.
This has been a tough two years dealing with this virus and all the mandates and the authoritarian rules. It's time we get our freedoms back and start allowing us to make our own risk assessments about this virus. I'm here again tonight to remind the board members who voted for the freedom of mask choice that your vote was greatly appreciated and we are here tonight to support your decision and your vote again. Don't let fear cloud your judgment that you made just three weeks ago. It's nice to know that some of you still are fighting for our freedoms and our constitutional rights. I still don't understand why we keep debating about masks. If you're on the team that believes they work, then please feel free to wear them. Just stop demanding that everyone has to wear them. If the masks and the vaccines are working, then why are the transmission numbers going up? Why are completely 100% vaccinated cruise ships having large outbreaks? Why are NFL, NBA, NHL teams having high cases when they're 95 to 100% vaccinated? But even with these rising numbers, I believe the risk is extremely low. In Montgomery County, as of December 23rd, as you can go on the charts and see, the incident rate was 291 with a positivity rate of 13.56. If you do the math, you're talking about 20 students and/or staff that have tested positive in Perk Valley. This is less than 1%. This is not a reason to be concerned or afraid of the virus, especially now when the majority of the positive cases are mostly common cold symptoms. Please continue to fight for freedom and allow everyone to have freedom of choice. We can all agree for a strong recommendation to wear a mask, just not a mandate to do so. Do not give in for another two to three weeks. You already did that back in December when you agreed to push back till January 3rd. These mandates will never stop until we stop it. Good night.
Susan Adam.
Hi, I'm Susan Adam, resident of Perkeomen Township. I have a daughter in third grade at Evergreen Elementary. I am asking the board to please follow the administration's proposed plan to keep a mask order in place for several more weeks. It is extremely important that our children are able to stay in school and our schools are kept open. If the mask order is lifted now, when cases are at an all-time high, students and teachers will inevitably become ill, many with COVID. I fear that we will get to a point where there won't be enough substitute teachers to cover teachers that are out and we will be forced to return to virtual education. I am also a teacher, but not at Perkeomen Valley. My school requires masking, but as teachers, we are also asked to upgrade our masks. And why, might you ask? Certainly, my administration wants the teachers to remain healthy, but in addition, if too many teachers are out sick, schools will be forced to return to virtual school, which students and teachers don't want. At school, I teach high school math and statistics. My background in statistics leaves me shaking my head at much of the data I've heard presented from others, especially people that are looking to have optional masking during the surge in COVID cases. I teach my students to look at the source of their data, how the study was done, where the data was presented, and if it was peer-reviewed. All things that are extremely important, but that is often not done. In addition, when people talk about the size of the virus and the mask holes being larger than the virus, the virus attaches to a liquid droplet. That droplet gets stopped by the mask, so masks do protect against the COVID virus. I also urge the administration and the board to have a matrix in place that has distancing and/or masking when cases are at certain numbers. When cases are low, by all means, let's make masks optional and let our students be close together. Dropping all safety measures at once is a recipe for disaster with cases so high. My goal is for my daughter to stay in school, be able to be with her classmates in person, but to do so safely. I can't wait for the day that she can go to school, not pick out a mask that matches her outfit, and our whole family can feel safe in sending her without her mask. But with the current cases, now is not the time. Please put your politics aside and vote for the safety of our students. Thank you.
I live in Perkeomen Township. I have a daughter here at Middle School East and my wife works at Middle School West. Thank you to the school board for coming here on a holiday weekend. I appreciate your dedication to the school district, the students, and the teachers to have a meeting to discuss this important issue and to listen to everyone in the community. And my phone just went. To expand upon what Dr. Adam just said, masks work by preventing aerosols from spreading. A single virus particle, except for people who are immunocompromised, will not infect a person. It's multiple virus particles in aerosols that masks protect us against. I've heard, as Dr. Adams said, a lot of misrepresentation of science. It's important to understand the scientist. Science, I am a scientist and I understand this. But I don't want to give you a science lesson. I want to give you my thoughts, which are we are in a fight against the virus and we need every weapon in this fight. The district has employed quite a few weapons to fight against the virus, including upgrades to HVAC systems and masking and encouragement of vaccination. Our enemies are not each other. Our enemy is the virus. The virus is a crafty enemy and we need every tool against it that we can use. In the December meeting, it was said that people in the community were going to malls and restaurants without masks. And that was true, but what did it get us? It got us sharply increasing rise in rates. There's a direct link between those two things. It also got us more hospitalizations. Masks are not perfect and they cannot protect everybody, but more people get COVID when they do not wear masks. We can't let our guard down now. Going without masks will allow more infections throughout the community. It has been pointed out that it has not affected the young people in the community as much as it has the elderly. But our role here is to protect everyone in the community. Children who are asymptomatic can spread the virus to older people whose immune systems may not be as effective at fighting the disease. Additionally, Virology 101 teaches us that the more cases we have in the community, the more the virus will mutate. I don't have enough time to get into why. As bad as the variants have been so far, more mutation will mean more variants and we have been lucky that we haven't gotten worse variants. But if we stick together and use the weapons that we have, we will defeat the virus. Thank you.
Holly Lehman.
I am strongly aligned with keeping the mask mandate for the next three weeks. While I understand why some of you may want to keep your original vote for masks optional in place, this is not the time to lose sight of being open-minded and flexible. However, I would suggest that you give some serious thought to why we need to have masks for the next three weeks. First of all, so many people are infected already and it will affect the administrative aspect of school to a point of not being able to function. I would like to see the kids stay in school. We need substitutes now, so imagine if we have a surge of absent teachers. Even if you believe it is just a cold and that no one will really be poorly affected by COVID, even if someone tests positive, they can't come to work whether they want to or not. I received a text right before I came into the meeting tonight. I've had a surgery planned for three months. They canceled it because the doctors have COVID and so do the nurses. The entire practice is closed down. Many kids are going to miss school no matter what the decision is tonight. However, the numbers will increase substantially with less mask-wearing. And lastly, what is three weeks really getting us? The time to cycle out the latest surge and get back to business is exactly the purpose. If you do not vote to place the emergency mask policy into place, it is your responsibility to figure out the mess after the fact. And if you do vote for that, I'd like to know what your plans are to deal with each scenario. It's just easier to prevent a shutdown and do the simple masking. This is also a chance for the new board members to gain the trust of the parents by making smart decisions that give us the best outcome for our kids' education and safety. We all want to find ways to continually move forward navigating our kids and educators back to a normal situation. Many would say that we are not getting anywhere, but I disagree. We have come a long way in the last two years and I personally see the light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you.
Charles Morton.
Freedom. I've heard that word thrown around a lot tonight and at the previous meeting. And I often ask myself, freedom from what? Or freedom to do what? People are saying that getting rid of the mask mandate brings back freedom. Freedom to infect other people, freedom to put others at risk. Removing a mask mandate increases the likelihood of someone who's immunocompromised, or children even who have compromised systems, to be at risk of being further harmed. And I think it's not only reckless, but also a malfeasance of office to do otherwise than to keep a mask mandate in place. Omicron is increasing at an exponential rate. The numbers have been very well specified and presented. I don't want to repeat that over and over. It's terrible. You can't get a test locally. You know, I've gone around and looked myself personally, even at Patient First, Tower Health, Urgent Care. They've got postings on their website showing unavailable. Don't come in because they're full. People are lining up at 5:00 AM for openings at 8 o'clock to get a COVID test. That's how bad it is right now. Viruses don't care whether you're Republican, Democrat. I think it's shameful that people are taking political positions on a public health crisis that's a global pandemic. It has no place. This isn't about politics. It's about what's right, it's about what's safe, and it makes sense to maintain a mask mandate. 66% increase of children being hospitalized with COVID. Kids who are hospitalized are 10 times more likely to be hospitalized if they're unvaccinated and kids are mostly unvaccinated. Why are we doing this? I don't think it's fair to gamble with children's lives, their health, their safety, and the lives of those around them. 70% of Omicron cases are asymptomatic. It does not make sense to remove masks. Follow the science. The good scientist a minute ago just said, if you couldn't get into the reasons why, I'll go into a little bit. Unvaccinated people are increasing why we have variants because the virus replicates, because viruses want to survive. They replicate in unvaccinated bodies. With unvaccinated people, unmasked people, and open environments, because they've already said, they're not staying home. I don't care if they were to be unvaccinated, unmasked, if they stayed home, but they don't. They believe they want to be free to do what they want to do. Well, guess what? I might like driving 100 miles an hour, but I can't. There's speed limits for a reason because I'm not the only person on the highway. Unmasked, unvaccinated people are putting others at risk. You must maintain a mask mandate, adopt the recommendations to increase public safety this proposed by the superintendent. Thank you.
Megan McQuade.
Megan McQuade, Skibek Township and a senior at PV High School. As a student in the high school, I urge and encourage the board to push back the optional mask date. I understand that not all students will agree with me, but over break, I've seen nearly all of my friends either test positive for COVID or come in contact with someone who has tested positive. I've seen other seniors, my friends, cry because they can't come to school or participate in activities. They couldn't see their families or see anyone over break. Do you understand how heartbreaking that is to see? If you are a parent, I see you and your opinions, but you do not see the tension and sadness in students that I have because of parents' actions in these board meetings. What is supposed to be a fun senior year, we lose activity slowly as the cases continue to rise because masks have become a political topic rather than a public safety concern. I am on Facebook and I see the brutal arguments and harsh words between parents. It is exhausting to feel like an adult or parent in this situation instead of being able to require, not require, to rely on adults in our lives to make well-informed decisions without childish arguments. It feels like a bunch of toddlers arguing in circles without any actual evidence or solutions proposed. I also heard early in the meeting, someone say that the health and safety plan is not followed by clubs. I can say as the president of GSA and the president of Reform and Safe Collective that it is followed. I do not know about sports, but many clubs keep masks on and distanced. I understand that people have a difference in opinion, but I am a student. I am inside the building, parents are not. I want to be able to experience my senior year and not have to go into virtual. I saw the mental health effects it had on students during that time from personal experience and my friends. The pure exhaustion and frustration I felt during that time is something I never want to do again. Please push the optional mask back.
My name is Deborah Callender and I am not a scientist and I'm not very political, but I have been a social worker for over 10 years and I am a mother of three children in this school district. I come here with a 50/50 outlook on this pandemic. I was in San Diego, California, helping the homeless population when the pandemic first began and we were the first to shut down. And the reason why I moved out here was because I was so tired of homeschooling three kids as a widow without any help while trying to work full-time outside the home. However, I will have to say that I don't really think that it is very smart to return to school tomorrow. I am a manager of a travel hockey league and over the last week, I've seen child after child test positive for COVID that was in close contact with my son and myself. We are vaccinated. However, as you know, after six months, that vaccination is kind of not valid anymore and there hasn't been an opportunity for children to get boosters. The other thing is there has been virtually no way to test the rest of the team because there are no tests anywhere, not even a week out from now. We have gone to pharmacy to pharmacy, I've gone to eight different pharmacies, trying to get the at-home COVID test and I honestly don't even- to get the at-home COVID test, and I honestly don't even think that they are very accurate to begin with. So, as far as the mask mandate goes, I'll be real with you, I don't think they really work because I have gotten COVID while being vaccinated while wearing a mask. However, if everybody's wearing them and practicing social distancing, I think it's really important to protect the teachers, who, many of them, are in at-risk age range. And for those that stand up here and say, okay, those people are only out to protect the kids, but it doesn't really affect the kids, how would it not affect the child if their teacher dies? My mother, who had cancer three times, is staying with us over the holidays, and she flies back in a couple days. What happens if my mother with COPD and cancer gets COVID, and my children get to see their grandmother die after Christmas break because we all return to school tomorrow without masks? We have to think about the community and not just ourselves or our kids. We're all in good health, that's great, great for you. Not everybody is in good health, and not everybody is young. And I think it's very irresponsible to go back to school tomorrow without masks or even at all. I just think we all need to think about other people besides ourselves. That is all I have to say.
Anyone else?
My name is Patty Frye, and I'm from Lower Frederick. I'm also a special ed paraprofessional at Schwenksville Elementary, and I've worked in our school district for 15 years. I am writing this email to strongly urge you to keep your decision made at last month's meeting to make this mask optional for all the students and staff at PV. I have seen these children's masks. I have seen how disgusting they are inside, and I'm very sorry to tell you this. They are brown, they are unwashed. It's not very healthy for them to have them on. Many of them do not wear them over their noses or their mouths. Some of them actually had bloody noses and stains in their masks, but are afraid to go and tell anybody. Some students cry, many students cry, and they tell me to keep it confidential because they cannot hear my instructions to complete their work. Months ago, the board said, just two more weeks of masks, just two more weeks to flatten the curve. Wait until all the teachers have gotten the vaccination. Keep wearing them until all the students five years and up have had the opportunity to get the vaccine. This has been done. It is time for the parents to make the choice for their voiceless children. They say, wear the mask until January 21st. This date will continue to get pushed back again and again, we all know this. Other school districts are mask optional and doing quite well, such as Penridge. Also, someone had said something about Sartorton tomorrow, going with their masks for two more weeks. However, Sartorton, they welcome many mask exemptions, many mask exemptions, let me tell you that. And I'm here also to be the voices of many parents who have contacted me today and said they cannot speak at these meetings because they are afraid of being ostracized by their children's, friends, parents. This division needs to stop. You comply because you want all this to go away, but it won't go away because you keep complying. Read that to yourself, keep thinking about that. Please, please make mask-wearing optional. It is the right thing to do. And I'm saying this for all students, but especially special ed. It's really hurting our students. It is. And I'm telling you, I've done this for 15 years, and it kills me to see my special ed students this sad. And I'm sorry, and I applaud you all for speaking from the schools, because I know this has got to be very difficult, and you had said something, sir, that you didn't want to drive 100 miles per hour. But you can, you just choose to not. This is the truth. So please, stay true to your first decision last month. Mask optional. You guys can wear a mask if you want, and if we don't want to, then we don't have to. Do it for the students. They're afraid to talk. Thank you and have a good night.
I received an email from Dr. Russell that concluded with, "It is my hope that the proposed revisions and transition steps are ones that will be supportive to all of our students, staff, and community, as well as begin to move forward towards something closer to the normal that we know." How many emails have we received with a message with this at the end? How are we moving closer to normal? This is what our kids have heard. It's just two weeks to stop the spread. It's just a mask. It's just social distancing. It's just six feet. It's just three feet. It's just a 14-day quarantine. It's just a 10-day quarantine. It's just a five-day quarantine. It's just a few months off. It's just virtual school. It's just a hybrid model. It's just until teachers get their vaccine. It's just until teachers get their second vaccine. It's just until the teachers get their booster. It's just a test. It's just a mask break. It's just until the kids get vaccinated. It's just until the vaccines become available for the younger children. It's just a health and safety plan. It's just an exemption that requires a doctor's signature. It's just because of the new variant. It's just because of the next new variant. It's just until we revise the health and safety plan. It's just playing sports with a mask on. It's just wearing a mask on the sidelines. It's just a virtual musical. It's just a masked outdoor homecoming. It's just a masked outdoor prom. It's just until the chorus concert. It's just until after winter break. It's just until January 3rd. It's just until the 21st. When will this end? The nice thing about mask choice and parent choice is that everyone gets that choice. It means if you want to wear a mask, you can. No one is taking that away from you. I was told by many doctors that RSV and the flu are worse in children than COVID. We have never masked for RSV or the flu. I wonder why. We were never driven by fear and living in fear. Eight out of 13 school districts in Bucks County will be mask optional tomorrow. Many have been mask optional since the start of the school year. I haven't heard of them having any issues whatsoever. How is our school district any different? The Pennsylvania Supreme Court has already made their voice heard. You no longer have the authority to require our children to wear a mask, and you never did to begin with. Two weeks to stop the spread, how many months later? Where is all the talk about the children who have continuously suffered at the hands of wearing a mask every day for the past year and a half? I am ashamed that this has not been more of a conversation amongst adults on this stage. Do the right thing. Don't be driven by your own fear or the fear of others. The children deserve it.
Hi, Pam DiStefano, Perkyhamon Township. I want to thank you for your vote to make masks optional at the last meeting, and I encourage you to uphold that vote. Nothing significant has changed since that vote. For the overwhelming majority of children, COVID is a cold. Children have suffered due to the unwarranted fear of adults for three school years now. When did it become our child's job to protect vulnerable adults? Everyone has had the opportunity to be vaccinated and to vaccinate their kids. Cloth masks do little to nothing to protect anyone against transmitting COVID. Furthermore, masks have caused health problems in many of our students, ranging from anxiety to impuntago, to headaches, to nosebleeds. Many children have had to seek medical attention for the damage that was caused by wearing a useless rag over their faces. The Supreme Court ruled that the mask order is void ab initio. From the start, you have never had the authority to mask children. You still do not have that authority. While I don't envy the position you're in, I am hoping and encouraging you to continue to uphold mask choice for all. Central Bucks School District is the third-largest district in the state. 18,000 students, and they have been and will remain mask optional on Monday, and nothing has happened. They are following a flu model to address the rising COVID cases. They will keep masking optional. They will report COVID-positive cases to the Department of Health, and the Department of Health will do the contact tracing and quarantine, not the school. If any student or staff is unwell, they should stay home. Nobody comes to school sick, and if symptoms persist, you seek your personal doctor. Mask choice is not saying that masks are banned, it's just saying that it's a choice. Please stay the course and uphold that choice. If we make decisions based in fear, we will have outcomes that don't align with what we truly believe. Please stay strong and stay the course, knowing so many parents support you in your last vote to unmask our children. Please continue to support mask choice and allow all parents to have the choice for their child. The last issue I want to quickly address is to request clarification of whether it is the school nurse's job or obligation to contact trace. I believe this is the job of the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. Bucks County School District isn't obligated to COVID trace or issue quarantine, so I'm wondering what is different here. We should be sure that the things we propose are legal and binding before we vote to change course. We aren't going to defeat a virus by keeping children masked eight hours a day for three more weeks at school. COVID is here to stay, just like the flu and RSV, but now is the time to move forward and to treat COVID the same as we have these other viruses all these past years. Thank you.
Tonight I'm speaking as the student liaison. Matt and I, over the last couple days, have reached out to a wide variety of students just to kind of feel out how the students were feeling about coming back tomorrow, mask optional. So, the details varied, but the general idea was pretty much the same, and I'm going to read through a lot of these quotes right now. First, we have, "People are coming back from vacations and places all over the country, and they may not know if they have it for up to 14 days after exposure." That means that if we have people losing their masks now, they may not even know that they were exposed to it for several days, which obviously would pose an issue when we're losing students from the classroom. No one wants to shut down, but they will end up having to shut down the school for the next month as they try to clean up the mess they made. This student was worried that if we end up taking all these masks off, or we have a portion of the student body, generally the portion that is less likely to abide by all the mandates, that are starting to lose their masks, what's going to end up happening is we're going to have to shut down the school and go back virtual, which I can tell you not a single student wants, because obviously that was very difficult last year. Another student pointed out that the people making the decision right now really have to listen to the students and the teachers, because you guys unfortunately won't be in the classroom. You guys aren't going to feel the direct ramifications of the decision you make tonight, so you've got to take into account all the opinions and who will actually end up being hurt or end up having to go virtual if things go south. Another student stated that they'd rather wait until the end of January or marking period two, because then we're not dealing with the surge from COVID. So, yesterday, people were waking up after a night of hanging out with friends and family for New Year's. If we go back Monday, we're still going to end up having those cases. Another student pointed out that people who don't believe that mask mandates are correct, generally their argument is that their student cannot wear a mask, whereas I can wear my mask, and then I'm fine. Except if I'm wearing a mask and another person's not wearing a mask, and they have COVID, and I end up being exposed to them, obviously that poses an issue for me. So it's not a personal decision that only affects you, you're affecting everyone in that radius around you in the classroom. It's important to consider as a parent, as a student, an educator, a board member, that even if you don't believe in the danger of COVID, students being pulled out of schools will pose an issue. If we're losing our education, our social time, all those things that everybody was so concerned about when we went virtual, if we're losing that, obviously losing the mask wasn't worth it. Okay. Those were words from my peers, so I'm very going to quickly share my own words. Removing the mask mandate right now, it's going to lead to a surge as a result of the holiday interactions. Not only should the mask optionality date be pushed back in accordance to the proposed plan, but there should also be a scheduled meeting prior to bringing back the mask optionality beforehand, just so that we can take a look at the circumstances. And in that sense, then you can get a better scope of what's necessary to do and how to move forward. Thank you.
I'm Lisa McHale, Perkyhamon Township. I'd like to have each of you consider staying the course with the district's current health and safety plan that was voted on before the Christmas break. Thank you for voting for parent choice. I have heard many say that masks are not perfect, but they may help. This is a little misleading. I am a dental hygienist. The mask I'm wearing currently, right now, is not effective against COVID. It's what I wore pre-COVID, when the virus first hit. N95s became the standard of protocol then in dental offices as this type of PPE became available. This is my understanding as a dental professional. Unlike the flu that is transmitted through droplets, the COVID virus is transmitted through aerosols, a much smaller microbe that travels through the air and passes easily through cloth and even medical masks. Cloth masking may in fact work for the flu, but they do little to prevent the spread of COVID. These viruses are spread by two very different modes of transmission. Two quick points. Any mask other than an N95-style mask is not effective. I imagine that very few students are actually wearing a proper mask as it is. If they do happen to be wearing an N95, I highly doubt they have been properly fit-tested to see that it is an effective barrier that provides any level of personal protection or any type of viral spread prevention. Just this morning, during the appearance on CBS's Face the Nation, the former Food and Drug Administration Commissioner, Dr. Scott Gottlieb, who now sits on the Board of the Directors for Pfizer, admitted that cloth masks do not provide a high level of protection against COVID-19. He said, and I quote, "Cloth masks aren't going to provide a lot of protection." That's the bottom line. Secondly, how does having kids masked during a normal school hour or a school day, but then switching to mask optional during after-school activities make any sense at all? It's not consistent, and it reduces all credibility to just about zero. We can't keep kicking this can down the road. It's time to face the reality that COVID is not going away, and that masks and vaccines are clearly not preventing the spread. No one can foresee the future, so please stay calm and stay the course. We can keep masking poly-- I'm sorry, we can't keep making masking policy based on assumptions and what-ifs. It's just not rational. Lastly, in reference to the email that Dr. Russell sent out this week, she herself reiterated that the Montgomery County Office of Public Health continues to recommend universal masking. Please note, they recommend, they do not require or mandate. Perkyhamon Valley School District can do this. I thank you for voting to stay the course and allowing parents and students the choice to do what is in their best interest. After all, we elected you, and you were elected to advocate for students, parents, and taxpayers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Keenan.
Let's see, we're at the item four of the agenda.
Actually, Rowan, hold on one second. Mr. Keenan, hold on one second. Sorry, Mr. Keenan, go ahead.
Sorry, just getting back. Oh yeah, 2.01. We have before us approval of a health and safety transition plan, version three.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Evans-Brockett. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Dr. Campley. Dr. Russell, do you want to give a presentation?
Yes, I would like to speak a little bit if I could. Thank you, Mr. Saylor. I have prepared just a few slides to organize the flow of some points and to help provide some of the background and make the case for the recommendation that appears before the board this evening. Before I begin, I do want to extend a Happy New Year to everyone and hope that '22 is better in whatever ways you would like than '21. I also like to extend a sincere thanks to the board for appearing here tonight and attending this meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to propose to you the updates in the health and safety transition plan. It's now actually a version three, based on some feedback, which I've appreciated very much. So I want to go over a summary of some of the updates, and I really appreciate the comments that have been shared this evening. I appreciate the emails that have been sent. We may agree to disagree or disagree to disagree, but I do appreciate learning about what the community is thinking, who is in favor, who is against, and what questions individuals have, and I hope to answer those questions this evening. So the summary of the proposed updates does incorporate a requirement to go back to masking for the next three weeks, and that is based upon the heavy burden of virus in the community and the desire to keep our students, staff, and community-- the community and the desire to keep our students, staff, and community healthy so that we don't have to make decisions that would lead to some sort of functional closure or virtual instruction. I am not interested in the district taking that step. Beginning January 3, I am recommending, again, as part of a transition plan, methodical, thoughtful steps that would incorporate a strong recommendation for masks after hours. Where activities are optional, students don't have to attend those. If they're in athletics, they tend to be moving around quite a bit, and there is some support for going without masks during intense exercise. So, my recommendation would be maintain the mandate during the school day, when all students are in school, and then relax it after school, when it's optional. We have many fewer students in the areas of the buildings. There has been updated information, so both the pandemic liaisons across the county, each school district has a pandemic liaison, as well as superintendents, met with the Office of Public Health last Thursday, engaged in separate conversations, pandemic liaisons in the morning, superintendents and representatives of OPH in the afternoon. Between that conversation and Friday, when they did share some draft guidelines and updates, there were changes to some of what they were thinking and what they had expressed on Thursday. Some of the significant changes that I want to call out that would be recommended to be in our plan include the changes around isolation requirements, quarantine requirements, and the use of at-home tests. These are three major changes, updates, that have been made by the county. Their guidelines are scheduled to be published tomorrow, January 3. There was a question about who's responsible for contact tracing in Montgomery County school districts. It is our nurses. It is the individuals that we assign within our buildings who are responsible for contact tracing. The county helps with, in the past anyway, recording some of the positives in the information, sending out letters. They are no longer sending out letters. They are no longer requiring the length of time for isolation and quarantine. Those are good things. They're indicative of some positive aspects of the behavior of the current variant and the virus. However, the bulk of the work that comes with contact tracing falls on our nurses. That's who does it in our district. We hear these terms, isolation and quarantine. I have to isolate if I am a confirmed positive, I have COVID. I have to quarantine if I'm exposed, if I'm a close contact to somebody who's a confirmed positive. What's really important to point out are the requirements now around isolation and quarantine, and I've presented those here. Again, they'll be incorporated into our plan. Good news, individuals that are identified as close contacts in the school setting only have to quarantine now for five days. It used to be seven days. Somebody mentioned even before that it was 10 days. It's good to keep our kids in school, presuming they test negative 24 hours after they're informed on day five, and they remain asymptomatic. They can come back to school. If students are diagnosed or staff with COVID, they have to isolate. They have to isolate for five days. And again, if their symptoms subside, fever-free for 24 hours, they can then return to work or to school. These are good things, less days out of school. Until we start to establish our systems for contact tracing and keeping straight who's a close contact and needs to quarantine, who's isolating, I am respectfully requesting that not only to protect some of what might come into the schools after the holidays and what exists out there in the community, but to allow our nursing team to establish the systems that will help them navigate the new rules around isolation and quarantine. So, some of these diagrams, if you look back in this presentation, go into greater detail about the definitions. Test to Stay is also an important program to call out right now. We have assurance testing up and running. One of our commenters shared that we used to obligate non-vaccinated/unvaccinated individuals to participate in assurance testing. We no longer require that, but we do have testing that does allow individuals, students or staff, to test to stay, to test on a regular basis, and now that'll shift based on the updated guidance, so that as long as they test negative and remain asymptomatic, they can stay in school. So, we have those assurance tests. We have individuals that can administer those, and we work with our families on when we can do that, to be accommodating. Initially, there were questions on the part of the county about whether or not they would allow Test to Stay to exist in a non-mask universal environment. Right now, the language in their guidelines says you don't have to necessarily be universal masking in your building, in your district. It doesn't say that today. So, we're moving forward, believing that eventually, if the board approves the plan right now, and there is a shift to recommending masks later this month, we will continue with Test to Stay. That's a positive program that has helped keep our students in school. What scientists and some of the research realized over time is that very few students emerged as positives when they were quarantined, a very small percentage. So, Test to Stay supports those data and allows us to test our students and get them back into school sooner, presuming they test negative and remain asymptomatic. That's a really good thing. We also have a Test to Participate program for students that are obligated to participate in certain programs and need to be either vaccinated or demonstrate their negative, for example, winter track meets and reporting to colleges. Some of them require that. That's a good thing. So, more pictures that help you to really understand some of the deeper information associated with some of the terminology and some of the processes. All along, from the beginning, we have employed this Swiss cheese model, a layered mitigation approach, that's included, as individuals have mentioned, upgrades to the ventilation, hand sanitizer everywhere, spacing, whether it's in classrooms or lunchrooms, cleaning, disinfecting protocols that looked different from those of the past, and cloth masks. We really looked forward to vaccination, and now, as the research continues to emerge, vaccination is the strongest mitigating measure. It's the strongest fight against this virus. We're going to get it if we're vaccinated. That is going to happen to a lot of people. However, you decrease the chances of serious illness and hospitalizations dramatically if you're fully vaccinated. I'm very appreciative that we've been able to provide that access to all of our learners at this point, and that's been a target that we've talked about for a very long time. We wanted to make sure, before we took these methodical, thoughtful steps forward away from some of these layers, that everybody had a chance to be vaccinated, and we are there now. So, the data are pretty high right now. They're higher than what we've seen in a very long time. So, the burden outside of school is very heavy. We've been very fortunate with the layered approach we've had in place, not to have that virus come into our schools to date. We've had very little to no transmission in our schools. I want to keep it that way. So, for the next several weeks, I'm recommending that the board consider requiring masks as a portion of that layer and start to move away from them. After-school activities would be a step in that direction, and ultimately, after the 21st, beginning on January 24, students can make that choice and come into school. By then, it is predicted that this surge will die down, and we are affording all of our learners, all in our school communities, the opportunity to be vaccinated and, as predicted anyway in the news beginning tomorrow, boosted if they fall in between those ages of 12 and 15. In the recent data on the state's website, the early warning monitoring system, it was good to see there was a slight decrease in hospitalizations and individuals on ventilators. So, not only are we looking at incidence and positivity rates anymore, but the data we need to consider are much broader. We hear lots of conversation about hospitalizations and individuals on ventilators, the stress on our infrastructure. These are important considerations, transmission in school, positive cases in our schools. These are all important metrics that need to be considered in moving forward, vaccination being the most significant. So, some additional data. When we talked about moving to mask optional beginning tomorrow, the data that night presented, discussed, referred to, indicated an incidence of 168. By Thursday of that week, they were reported on the early warning monitoring system, the dashboard, at 250, and they've gone up from there to 344 and 291. They're reporting over 500 today. So, we're experiencing the surge, and it shows in those particular data points. We talk about the effectiveness of masks. There is research that supports a level of effectiveness with masks when they're worn correctly, so yes, we have to reinforce that, and when they are part of that layered approach, when there are other mitigating measures in place. So, there's some research in here that continues to support masking. I am aware of more research emerging, pushing back on masks. They don't protect-- they're not foolproof, absolutely not. Again, the best protection for any of us is vaccination, but when a properly-fitted mask is worn and in combination with other mitigating measures, it can be very helpful in mitigating the spread of this virus. I do have questions about our kids wearing masks for as long as they have, absolutely, as some of you have raised. Our second graders have known most of their school experience in masks. There is a mental health crisis or concern that we're also considering that some believe is contributed or influenced by some of the steps that we've taken during this pandemic, and some of it has been because we have to stay healthy, and we don't want people to get sick. But when we're able to take steps forward, it will serve our students in some of these other ways, not only with mental health, social, and emotional interactions, but I do worry about our youngest learners and early literacy skill development, phonemic awareness, phonics. These things are also considerations as part of that big picture. As you read through the slides, you'll see that there's some additional information around some of the studies that have been done in support of masks. What are other districts doing? Somebody mentioned Souderton. They sent out a message yesterday, I believe, where they shifted from mask optional for two weeks to a mandate, again, for some of the same reasons that I am sharing with you this evening. Springfield currently is planning on a shift January 18. Methacton and Wissahicken are both two districts that I work closely with. They are also targeting the end of the first semester. However, they look to the Montgomery County Office of Public Health for guidance, and they may change their positions. That's happened quite a bit over the course of this pandemic. There are other districts in Montgomery County that continue to require masks. They have some conversations planned in January. They're also looking at those incidence and positivity rates and the transmission levels they convert to or translate to, high and substantial, as the prompts to keep them in a mask-required environment. I am suggesting we go beyond just those metrics, and we consider some other aspects. Again, vaccination is key. So, what else needs to be considered? There was an interesting article in Time Magazine with some helpful references. Of course, we know vaccine eligibility is expanding. There are some promising treatments coming out for individuals who do contract COVID and become seriously ill. That's good news. There are some other antibody treatments, and the idea that we need to look beyond case numbers alone and consider some of the broader data. Some of these graphs that are included, again, inform you of how many individuals have received the vaccine to date. There's some more detailed information here. Again, people are reading this. You can get it off of the state's Department of Health website. Almost 80% of eligible individuals in Montgomery County have at least one dose of the vaccine. And of course, hospital admissions and the stress on our infrastructure is concerning. We've heard that tonight from some of our healthcare workers. I've learned about it through some of the email correspondence. That's concerning. We don't want to stress that anymore. I'm suggesting we give this a few more weeks to allow that surge to calm down and hospitals to be relieved, to some degree, of some of the stress they're experiencing right now. Interesting graph that the CDC published as part of a presentation, you can see the presentation in the upper right, but it does compare the experience of students who have had influenza versus COVID, ages 5 to 11, for a period of time. And it's interesting to see the comparison of how students, the hospitalizations that were required for students when they experienced the flu versus COVID, and the flu in different years versus COVID, where the red line would be the flu during 1920, while the yellow line is COVID. So, when individuals start to make these comparisons, there is some interesting data that prompts questions around how we treat and respond to COVID. The most vulnerable to COVID are those that are unvaccinated and older. Those are the ones that we need to be thinking about. I mentioned mental health. The United States Surgeon General's Advisory Task Force put out protecting youth mental health. Again, concerns that have emerged, we're realizing them, we're becoming aware of them here in the school district, related to some of what kids have experienced in this pandemic. And some of it, we had no choice. They had to do it so that we could remain healthy and continue moving forward with the school experience. However, if there are things that we can do to start to improve upon their mental health, we want to do that. We want to take the steps. People have mentioned tonight, too, the Omicron variant, very contagious. It is demonstrating itself to be less severe. Good news. The most at risk are those unvaccinated and those that are in the older age group category. Some hospitalization data, again, just to support these statements that I'm making, I like to back up what I say and share with the board with references. The majority of individuals in hospitals with COVID in ICU on ventilators are unvaccinated. These are two slides from two different dates from the Bucks County Department of Health website. This is information from Tower Health, which represents several different hospitals and compares unvaccinated to vaccinated. And again, unvaccinated individuals are affected and being hospitalized more so than the vaccinated. Pediatric data as presented on the CDC websites. Fewer cases of COVID have been reported in children 0 to 17 compared with adults. They can still get sick from COVID, and that's important. We can't dismiss that. They can still get sick, and they can make others sick, and that's important for us to keep at the forefront. The more individuals that are vaccinated, the less likely they are to be really sick or to get really sick. The rates of associated hospitalizations are also lower in children as compared to adults. And now, this last statement is important. Everyone ages 5 and older is eligible to receive a vaccine if they so choose. So, in summary, number one, we want to maintain the health and safety of our students, staff, and community. What happens in the schools can influence what happens out in the community. We want to keep everybody healthy and safe, and we want to keep kids in school. I have no interest in recommending to this board a virtual step for kids, as has been mentioned by some of our commenters and some of the heads nodding. For most students, virtual learning is much less effective than onsite, in-the-building learning. I will certainly-- I will certainly continue to monitor all of the data that we now look at beyond those incidence and percent positivity rates that are listed here. My suggestion is that we, my recommendation is that we implement universal masking for the next three weeks. We continue extracurricular activities. Take a step away from masking during those optional activities. That's methodical. Take that step. As of January 24th, I am recommending that in our schools, because all will have had access to the vaccine, that we shift to a strongly recommended mask environment. I have started to compare data between Perkyomen Valley and other school districts regarding positive cases versus enrollment, per enrollment, Bucks County Schools and Montgomery County Schools. So when I have that ready for our board, I'll share that. Our nursing team does need time to adjust to the new MCO PH guidelines to address the positive cases, the potential positive cases, the updated contact tracing systems, and the resources and the management of test to stay. I'm also recommending that we consider as a district for those that are medically predisposed or have a medical condition that would warrant a KN94, we're hearing more and more about these masks, that we provide those to our students similar to the way that we provided exemptions. We provide these masks beginning on the 24th, if that would be an appropriate step to take for individuals based upon being immunocompromised or medically compromised. And with that, I will take your questions if you have any. Thank you.
Discussions, Mr. Felton?
Thank you, Dr. Russell. I wanted to make a statement this evening. I felt it was something that I normally don't talk very much, but I do feel like I needed to talk today, and I did make sure that I turned my microphone on this time. So in November, I was given an amazing opportunity of being elected to serve on the school board at Perkyomen Valley. It's a district that I've lived in, worked for, and been a part of for 35 years. I was humbled by the number of people who put their faith in me. However, I was also very aware that this was not a landslide decision. In fact, there was a relatively small number of votes separating the top and the bottom. This made it clear to me that even more apparent over the past several months, this district has become seriously divided. That division has become even more apparent over the past month since being part of the board. The divisiveness has even found its way onto the school board with division or divisiveness and negativity, much of that division, while not all does seem to revolve around the issues we will be voting on tonight: masks. I felt it important that I make my own thoughts clear as to my feelings about masks. I was incredibly excited when I got my vaccination and was able to return to a level of normalcy, being able to go into most places without having to wear the mask. With regards, personally, I don't like masks. With regards to our students, however, I believe that it needs to be up to the parents and the family to decide what they feel is best for their son or daughter. I do not believe that any parent is going to put their child knowingly into harm's way, but I do believe it is the choice of the family and not for me to dictate. Tonight, we will be deciding what will take place as the students return to school tomorrow. Following a meeting this past Thursday, Dr. Russell, you proposed a plan that for the first time provided a reasonable and realistic compromise for everyone. She and/or you and whoever else was involved in making your decision took a bold step in that version that no one had been able to do before and recommended that the mask remain in place until the 21st, at which time the choice would be returned to the parents. You also said that masks will be recommended but not required during all after-school activities starting tomorrow, as had been previously discussed. I commend you on that plan, and it was one that I felt comfortable with to stand by and to support. However, it seems that tonight we will be voting on one of several plans. Do we continue to stay the course and stick with what was decided last month to go fully choice? Do we return to mandated masking for all school-related activities? Or do we accept the compromise proposal offered by you, Dr. Russell, and begin to work together as a team? For me, the choice is clear. I will support the plan that you had put forward and vote to implement it. However, the board should know and make no mistake. If that is not voted on, I will vote for choice. I believe that time has come to begin to work together rather than fight against each other. I believe that you provided us a way in your plan to do so. My goal in being elected and serving on this board has and always will be to put the students first. I've always been committed to that resolve. I would urge the board to accept your plan as a reasonable compromise. Thank you.
I was wondering if we could have Meg Lewis come up and talk for a minute about some of the challenges her staff are going to face with the lack of direction they're getting from the county right now.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. Firstly, if you don't mind, I'd like to address the students who spoke tonight. Very proud of you. And on behalf of your PV nurses, we know these last two years have been difficult, and asking you to wear masks all day in school has added to that challenge. For every student who has tolerated the masks without issue, we have had students who have struggled educationally, socially, and emotionally. We appreciate your resilience and your patience. It's important to note that we support the motion and the vote to move forward with a transition to get you out of masks as soon as possible. Mr. Dorr, did you have a question? Did you have a question for me?
I think what would be really helpful, Mrs. Lewis, is if you could give us some sense of the challenges based upon the changes to the isolation and quarantine rules that our nurses are concerned about or wondering about. I know you have a meeting early in the morning to, again, try and organize an updated process as the county is bowing out a little bit more from some of the process, and that means it's on our team. So if you could just talk a little bit about that, I think it would help the board gain a sense of what's going to be involved.
Sure. Well, as you mentioned, Dr. Russell, contact tracing has been on the nurses. So historically, under Public Code Title 28 and Chapter 27, it directs school nurses in the presence of a communicable disease in our school district to notify the Office of Public Health. And we have done that in any case of whooping cough or chicken pox or meningitis. We've never been asked to or have had to identify a healthy student who has been in close contact and ordered to quarantine them. Now, with COVID, we took that task on under the auspices of the Office of Public Health. We did that work. We would identify a student. We would contact their parent or their guardian. We would address what the recommendations were, the quarantine time, and what would happen for them to come back to school. The Office of Public Health would then send a letter out confirming what we told them and using their authority as public health directors to enforce that quarantine or isolation. They are taking that away. They will no longer be providing letters to families. So we have asked them for increased guidance on how to contact trace, what is our roles, what is our responsibilities. I was on an email with the county just on Saturday night, and they don't have that information for us yet. They don't know what that's going to look like. Will it just be a letter to a classroom? Will we continue to contact trace? And what support can they give us? So as Dr. Russell said, they provided on Friday a new school isolation and quarantine guidance. That will not be made public until tomorrow. And even on Saturday night in my conversations with them, it was not accurate. They had to make some changes. They didn't have the new definition of fully vaccinated in it either. So fully vaccinated now has changed to include a booster for anyone who is six months out of their either two-dose or their one-dose vaccine. But in their school guidance, it said that people would have to meet all of the requirements and that a booster would be required for everyone. Not everyone, just in that six months. So they have some changes, and they had some work to do over these next few days, and they said they needed some time. And because of that, we would need some time. We would need to gather who was going to be contact tracing. How is that going to look? Who's going to be doing test to stay? We have contracted with an outside agency, and they have provided a lot of the support for the assurance testing. We've asked them to now come into our schools to do contact tracing. We have one person scheduled for the high schools on Tuesday, and then we have one other person who will be coming in intermittently. It's definitely not enough if we're going to have to contact trace to see who now is fully vaccinated, which means a booster, who would be masked in the classroom, who would not be masked in the classroom. At this time, we are really just finding and identifying close contacts in our secondary lunchrooms. So that's where students are not able to maintain the distance. You know, they're less than six feet, and it's for greater than 30 minutes. So that's really where we're identifying students, and it has not been that many. Maybe two dozen. And most of them have participated in test to stay once that was approved by the board. Their parents consent to that. The students consent to that, and they've been able to stay in school. And we would like to continue that. So there are some of the challenges that we have been faced with in this very short time period.
I will just publicly thank Mrs. Lewis. She is our pandemic liaison. I didn't want to necessarily announce that. She gets a lot of people reaching out to her. But I have really appreciated working with her and the team of nurses through her to get their feedback, to get their insights and their expertise around some of these ideas and what's being recommended to you this evening. So, and you know, over the holiday break, the winter break, there was a lot of conversation happening in different circles with different people. So I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Mrs. Mayers?
Thank you. I have a question, and I'm not exactly sure if it goes to you, Mr. Subers, combination, Dr. Russell. But I'm wondering, I mean, hearing tonight, especially, I think it was Mrs. Frye talking about the special ed students who are really struggling to wear their masks. I've heard that other students, I mean, this is not, there are students with documented issues wearing masks. And I'm wondering, is it possible for us to relax our exemption form a little bit so that we can give those students who really were hanging their hat on tomorrow, they're going to, you know, see some freedom and that their parents deem that they need to be mask optional? Is that something that we can talk about, and how would we do that?
Before we answer that, do, Dr. Russell, are you able to go over the current exemption?
Yes, I can do that. I can summarize that. To qualify for a mask exemption, our students are and parents are required to complete a standard form that appears on our website and provide documentation from a licensed medical provider who has, who is licensed to diagnose and has indicated that there is some reason for which a student should not be wearing a mask. And we do have some exemptions that are in place right now, so we require that doctor's note. There are other districts that do that a little bit differently. Again, that has been a layer that has supported some of the positive outcomes through the pandemic, keeping our students in school, maintaining a low number of positive cases, et cetera, et cetera.
And Mr. Subers, forgive me if I'm wrong, but I would assume a change could be made tomorrow in Section 1.04 where a motion could be made to add that floor item or action item to the agenda.
Yes, there would be a motion to amend the agenda. It would require a majority vote and an explanation for the change. I would also note that with respect to students eligible for special education-related services under IDEA and/or Section 504, an alternative means of requesting an exemption from the mask requirement would be through the IEP or 504 process. So that's an alternative for those students.
If I may, Mr. Saylor, I just want the board to be aware. I'm a bit reluctant to take this step beginning tomorrow. If we consider this, I wonder if the board would consider waiting a week or maybe two. Again, methodical, thoughtful steps forward. So if we can hang in there for this first week back, status quo.
I'm just going to, hey, I'm just going to, I'm going to remind everyone that this meeting has now become this domain, and you're there to watch. And I understand that's difficult, and I respect that, but we have work to do. This is not a paid event where we can boo a player if he misses a foul shot or we disagree with what someone says. We're not at a hockey game right now.
I would, I'm sorry. The only thing I would finish with is I would wonder if, not opposed to doing that, not opposed to looking at the exemption form. I am aware of other districts who have experienced not necessarily a higher percentage of positive cases. However, what I would ask is the consideration to wait at least a week before we would implement something different. I don't have any idea how many parents would attest to the fact that wearing a mask is creating a real problem for their children, but I wouldn't want it to be too many too fast with some of the considerations that we need to have in place right now.
We'll go to Mrs. Mayers, then Mr. Keenan.
I just was wondering, Mrs. Lewis, if you can let, share maybe what the nurses are seeing, some of the things that they're seeing from the students who are struggling, if they're students struggling wearing masks, what they're seeing.
So we do have students that have mask exemptions. There aren't many. There's probably about maybe 10 at the high school. I have five at Skipback. It seems at the secondary level, students that have mask exemptions are hesitant to take off their masks. They, there's not that many of them to do that. So it has been a struggle for them to balance what may be best for them and to be the only one without a mask. That's just a very real issue for them.
Before Mr. Keenan, does anyone else have any questions for Ms. Lewis? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Keenan?
Comments and such things? All right. Couple of things before I get started. So to tell you just a little bit about me, I am a board member. I got elected in November, and I decided to run at the beginning of the pandemic a long time ago because I have young children. I have the youngest children of anyone on the board. And I had a daughter, Miss Kindergarten, and I have a kindergartner who's wearing a mask. And they both have terrible difficulty with the mask. And it is child abuse to be putting a mask on these kids. And to whoever forces me to put a mask on my kids, you're sick, all right? You're terrible. Now, I'm not better, but I'm different. We're all different. A little bit about me. You are interrupting. Can you not hear me? We're discussing the voting on this.
Come to order, please. Mr. Keenan has the floor. He's discussing the motion on the floor.
I believe I was talking about masks.
You may continue.
Just to tell you a little bit more about me. I was an immunocompromised child. I missed half a year of school. And in order to return to school, I had to have prophylactic treatment to be around people. No one wore a mask for me. I was never a victim. I did not complain. I did not whine, and I went back to school as soon as I could. I participated in every activity I could, and I went through life like it didn't make a difference because it didn't make a difference. The only harm that you cause to these children is the harm that you put on them. They are not in danger, so stop it. Now, to the matter, though, specifically at hand, and this is very important, and this is what I do in terms of talking about this mask, the mask situation right now and as it applies to school districts, because a lot's going on and not just in, as people say, with the science. Everyone can make up their own minds whether masks do and Everyone can make up their own minds whether masks do any good. We know that there are significant downsides to masking children, especially young children. Regardless of your opinion, I'm here tonight to relate to you a message sent directly to us from the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania. A message that says unequivocally that mandating masks in Pennsylvania schools is illegal unless it is specifically authorized by state law or state regulation. You just heard the nurse talk about those, those regulations that she enforces relating to chicken pox and, and other contagious diseases and COVID is not contained in those regulations. She is not authorized to do what the health department has been asking her to do regarding COVID. Masking healthy children in schools is not specifically authorized under any state law or regulation. School solicitors have relied on section 510 and Brian and I, Brian can disagree and say I'm wrong. I'm fine with that. I've been told I'm wrong many times, but many lawyers agree with me. Section 510 of the school code for requiring masks, prior to the Supreme Court decision of December 10th, there was nothing saying that requiring masks was not reasonable, was not a reasonable rule or regulation for us to do. It was necessary, it could be argued that it was necessary and proper regarding the conduct and deportment of pupils, and that was the case prior to December 10th. However, everything changed December 10th. Such would have been the case if the Secretary of Health had never instituted a mask mandate. That was appealed, that mask mandate was appealed all the way to the Supreme Court. If the governor and secretary of health had merely let each school district fight it out the whole time, there wouldn't have been a question, there wouldn't, the question would not have been answered by the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court, however, stated definitively that a mask mandate on children in Pennsylvania would be and would require a state regulation absent a declared emergency by the governor. School boards must follow the state regulations regarding providing an education to all students. We must follow the law. Our health and safety plan requires masking, testing, exclusion, and relevant vaccination status of students. The vaccination status of students, whether for influenza virus or for SARS-CoV-2, is none of the business of the school district. The governor has had the authority to require such things of schools during the declared emergency. He had the power to suspend state regulations. However, school boards and even the Secretary of Health cannot impose such health regulations on students unless specifically authorized. School boards, in conjunction with school nurses, can exclude students for diphtheria, for measles, for mumps, for pertussis, for rubella, for chicken pox, for respiratory streptococcal infections, infectious conjunctivitis, ringworm, impetigo contagioso, pediculosis capitis, pediculosis corpore, scabies, trachoma, tuberculosis, nicerium meningitis, all of those things, and they have specific times for exclusion. There's no regulation allowing a school to exclude a student for coronavirus. Nowhere does it say that a child may be masked, tested, vaccinated, or excluded for COVID. After almost two years, Pennsylvania has not granted the authority to school districts to mask, to test for COVID, to exclude its student, or to require or consider vaccination status of students relating to COVID. The Perkyum Valley COVID Health and Safety Plan is illegal and unenforceable and void since the end of the emergency. It's been effectively void since December 10th when the Supreme Court told us this. The school district and the school board are not administrators of student health except as authorized by the law. Also, there are general symptoms where a student can be excluded. A fever greater than 102, productive cough with fever, purulent discharge from the eyes, rash with fever or behavioral change, mouth sores, oral temperature, unusual lethargy, persistent vomiting, persistent diarrhea, and that's it. Some of those could be present in a COVID case. Furthermore, the school maintains a record of those exclusions because we have to watch out for the kids that we are excluding, that they still receive their education. If it seems like our health and safety plan appears to be like the state regulations for other illnesses, it's because our health and safety plan is exactly like those state regulations and is written to take the place of those state regulations. A regulation didn't exist during the emergency when the governor suspended regulations and said you had to do this, so the school district had to do it. This was a temporary regulation pursuant to the governor's emergency order. That was the basis on which we did all of this. The legitimacy of our health and safety plan depended entirely upon the governor's declaration of emergency. If you were, if you believe that we are still in a state of emergency and need this health and safety plan, you have to reach out to him. I'll read the, except for the Supreme Court's decision, our solicitor's opinion, I would back it. I would say that it would stand. And, and of course, the decision, if we disagree, has not been decided and it won't be decided. I'd like to see it decided and quickly. I wish that a school district and not the Secretary of Health had been taken to the Supreme Court. But the Supreme Court did address the attempt by a Pennsylvania administrative agency and they covered the Montgomery County Board of Health and the school board, whether we try to make and create authority for regulations that are inconsistent with state law. I think this is why the Montgomery County Board of Health is not mandating things because they've been told. The Supreme Court told them and they're afraid. They're backing off everything because they know that they're going to lose and they don't want to violate people's constitutional rights. The solicitor's opinion, if it is still that we have good legal ground to mask our students, now goes directly against the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court has the authority. This applies just as much to the Montgomery County Board of Health and the mask mandate was overruled for the exact same regulation that the Board of Health uses. The mask mandate for the Secretary of Health is the same regulation the Board of Health uses for isolation and quarantine. They, the Board of Health has a job defined by statute and regulation, which is also limited by the recent Supreme Court decision. Their job is not our job. They can undertake those quarantine and isolation measures, tracing measures prescribed to them by law, whatever they think they are. We, as a school district, can only undertake those medical requirements, exclusions and isolation requirements prescribed under the law. We cannot do anything else. We would all like to do more to get through the pandemic, however, we must do our job and our job is to follow the law. We cannot violate the law and students' rights because some parents want us to. We cannot violate the law and students' rights because some teachers want us to. It is not our job to debate masks. It is our job to follow what the governor rightly instructed us during the declared emergency and it is our job to follow the state regulations once the emergency is over. The legislature has had time to put new regulations in place and they did not. That is not our fault. It is our fate. And the Supreme Court has stated emphatically that a mask mandate is the subject of state regulation. The Supreme Court requires specific authority for a mask mandate because it is a health and safety measure with significant potential to interfere with the rights of Pennsylvanians, especially the right of the youngest among us, with their right to education. I know that the court's decision is long, but if you read it, you will have no doubt that a mask mandate requires new state legislation. We are authorized to regulate, here at the school district, we're authorized to regulate skirt length, hair length, mustaches, profanity. All those things have to do with conduct and deportment. That's the provision that our solicitor says allows us to regulate COVID, conduct and deportment. Unless authorized by the state, as the governor did with his emergency order, we are not authorized to regulate the students' medical care. Remember this, and the Supreme Court goes to some length to remind us, we are masking healthy kids. We are excluding healthy kids from school and that is not what we do in Pennsylvania. And it would take a state regulation to require such a thing. The school district is not authorized to mask kids. We have no power to mask kids. We are not authorized to intrude into the medical issues of kids except as authorized. We are not authorized to exclude kids because of COVID unless they meet one of the state requirements written in the regulations. We must operate within the law. The emergency is over. If there was, is a regulation to be done regarding this disease in schools, it is for the state to determine. If you want kids to be required to wear masks in schools, talk to your state legislature. Don't harass your school board.
Again, we're not at a hockey game.
Mr. Keenan, in response to your opinion, I would note that the Supreme Court decision in Corman only addressed the authority of the Secretary of Health to enter a mask mandate pursuant to an emergency order, were absent the proper adoption of a regulator, through the regulatory process. The Supreme Court did not address any constitutional claims or other claims related to the mask mandates, but limited the discussion and rationale to the failure of the Secretary of Health to follow the proper regulatory review process. And in fact, both the Supreme Court and the Commonwealth Court and bound decisions suggested that the Secretary of Health could in fact adopt those mandates through the regulatory process. The court went out of its way to explain that it was not reaching a conclusion as to whether masks in school were a good idea or even to, and again, went on to suggest that the Department of the Health would have the authority to impose such a regulation. You're correct, we are requiring, we are relying on section 510 of the school code to permit the school board to adopt a reasonable rule and regulation relating to, in this instance, a mask mandate. It's been held that the provision, that provision, section 510, has been found to permit schools' wide authority to create rules and regulations related to student and staff conduct during the school day, especially when maintaining order and safety in the schools. There have been numerous challenges outside of the state of Pennsylvania to mask mandates in which the mask mandates were upheld as being constitutional. There have been no cases on point in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and I reiterate that the Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision in Corman is not on point in relation to the issue that you're raising, which is the board's authority to make this mandate. It is our opinion that the school board does have this authority and it's also back, immediately following the Corman decision by the Supreme Court, the Secretary of Education specifically announced that the school boards had the authority and were strongly recommended to continue with mask mandates. So again, we do have a difference of opinion. You're very correct that there has been no, you know, dispositive ruling by any court with jurisdiction over our board, but there have been numerous decisions upholding in other, outside jurisdictions, upholding the constitutionality and the authority of schools to impose this mandate. There had been prior decisions under 510 allowing schools to create rules relating to bans on smoking, vaccine requirements prior to the issuance of statewide standards. There is precedence for school boards imposing vaccine requirements prior to a statewide mandate. There's multiple, multiple other cases describing the wide discretion given to school districts regarding school affairs, regulation of school affairs, and in particular where, where it deals with the safety and welfare of students. So again, absent a court with proper jurisdiction ruling that we do not have, or the school board does not have that, the authority, it is our opinion that the school board does have that authority.
Dr. Campley?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Subers. Especially thank you for the fact that you are an expert in educational role, as this is what you have been doing here for, I believe, over 30 years and this is what you work on constantly. I didn't realize that this was going to be an opportunity to grandstand as much as Mr. Keenan decided to do, nor did I know that we were permitted or able to prepare a dissertation ahead of time, or I would have brought mine with me. But I will say that you're correct, it is our job to keep all of our students safe, all, A-L-L. And that is because that's our duty as educators. And when you think about education, we have to have FAP, Free Appropriate Public Education in the LRE, least restrictive environment. We have students who are immunocompromised. We have students who are not able to wear masks for varying reasons. It is our duty to protect them and I'm sorry that you were not protected, but you were one and right now we're dealing with something that's creating a worldwide pandemic. Our hospitals are bursting at the seams. Temple is putting up a tent because they can't house people inside. People cannot get vaccine, the appointments that they need at a fast enough rate. We can't get tested. We can't find tests. We need to do what we need to do for the next several weeks to see what happens with this surge. And when the surge comes down, and it will because we know it's happened in the past, then we can have additional conversations. In fact, I'm all about compromise. I think Mr. Fattin's on point. We need to compromise. We should have some sort of matrix and maybe we start to look at things in a little bit of a different manner. Maybe we don't just look at transmission rates as Dr. Russell says, but I implore you, Dr. Russell, come up with a matrix. Put in hospitalization rate, put in transmission rates here in the county, in our district area, and let's talk about it. Maybe we go three weeks and we have masks and then we get two, three weeks where we don't have to have them and something because we can't promise in two weeks, in two weeks, in two weeks. You're right, the person who said, we have this list, when this happens, when that happens. Absolutely, we can't keep doing that. There should be no promises because we can't take the pandemic at its word. It's ever-changing and evolving. So what do we need to do? We need to look at the data as it comes in and make decisions in the moment. We need some sort of matrix, but in the meantime, let's just vote. Let's save our kids and keep them safe for the next three weeks and in that time, is plenty of time to kind of figure out what we can use moving forward to help us decide week to week to week what we're going to do. But it's our right to teach every single kid in school, which is the least restrictive environment. These kids with special needs need to be here in school. Thank you.
If I may, I just think, not to make you feel bad, but I just don't know that you know that, I think I'm the only one on the board with an immunocompromised special needs child in PV School District. I'm not the only one. I just, I didn't, I just didn't know if you knew that.
Other discussions? Well, I mean, if no one else wants to discuss, I'm going to say a few things and then I guess we're going to vote. We got about 200 or so, about, well, I'm sure everyone got private emails. School Board 10 got about 200-ish emails. Didn't have an opportunity to respond to all emails. As I've said to people, if you email me directly, you'll definitely get a response and my phone The emails are not 50/50, 60/40, I would say, 60/40, 40% mask choice, 60% mask mandate. It's hard to tell when you're just listening to the people that are talking or you just listen to the emails that you get. I've spoken to an ER doctor at Tower Health who said, you should definitely mask. I spoke to an ER doctor in Einstein and said that I spoke to an ER doctor in Einstein who said, "The masks don't work." What do I do? I'm talking to the ER doctor. I spoke to nurses who said, "Absolutely," not school nurses, but I spoke to nurses in general who said, "Absolutely mask." I spoke to nurses who said, "It doesn't even mean anything." These are hard decisions, which is why I've said from the get-go, these decisions should be made at the county level and at the state level. I find it hard, and I get criticized for it, and that's fine, I can take the criticism, because it's my opinion, that this setting has to be masked, but at the YMCA, at the gym, no mask. At Red Robin, no mask. At the mall, no mask. At the movie theater, no mask. On PV's own Twitter pages, no masks. Every single picture shows kids not wearing masks properly, shows teachers not wearing masks properly. And it's been like that for a really, really long time. And that is, is like, to me, confuses me. I ran for the board because I wanted to be involved with policy and finances and education and kumbaya and all that fun stuff. I am not a doctor, I am not a scientist, but every doctor and scientist I talk to says one thing, and then I find another scientist and doctor who says another thing, and it makes my head explode. We have a doctor in Montgomery County who says, "We should mask our students." We have another doctor in Bucks County who says, "We shouldn't mask our students, it should be their choice." That confuses me. Duke University, 99.9%, I don't even know how that is, is a case, I guess someone's almost done, 99% vaccinated plus mask mandate, they've gone virtual. Vermont University, 97% mask mandate and vaccination rate, they've gone virtual. Georgia has gone virtual. Can't get a flight. I had a friend, it took him 59 hours to get home from British Columbia, because they couldn't get a flight because workers were calling out. New York has a nursing shortage, but yet 30,000 nurses were fired because they don't have their vaccine mandate, but they're excited to bring in 1,200 people from the National Guard. I'd rather bring in 30,000 nurses, I hope that would help. We are living in a pandemic that sadly has been politicized around the globe, not just here in Montgomery County, not just here at our high school. I hear that the unvaxxed are the problem. 43% of the world's population is vaccinated. It's not just the unvaccinated here in Montgomery County, 43% of the world's population is unvaccinated. In the United States, 13% of our population cannot get vaccinated. So if we're 80% vaccinated in Montgomery County, we're potentially 80 of 87%, which means we're 94% vaccinated, because 13%, not counting the kids that aren't allowed to get a vaccination, 13% of our vaccinated eligible citizens are not eligible to get a vaccine for some type of medical condition or an allergy. These are difficult decisions. Even the current plan is difficult to understand, because like, when I go to a restaurant and I wear my mask and then I sit down, luckily I'm only five foot eight, or five foot seven, depends on what day of the week it is, COVID's not there when I take my mask off to eat. But COVID's not going to be there after school. I understand we're trying to get a compromise, and I hope the compromise passes, as is. I can't vote for it, and I've been very honest with Dr. Russell, I can't vote for it because I don't think I have the power, and I respect what you said, I understand what he said, I don't know who's right, and I don't care, but I believe the health of my child is for me and my wife to decide, and not to school to decide. I am vaccinated, I am boosted, as is my wife. If my doctor says my son should be boosted, he will get boosted, and he will also be in a mask come Monday, regardless of what happens today. I am not anti-mask at all. I don't think this mask particularly works, but I am not anti-mask. And the decisions we make do affect our children. We all have children in this district, or grandchildren in this district, or we know, oh, sorry, Don, got some grandkids. We know, I know 800 kids, I know 800 kids in our school district, 800, and if I add umpiring, I probably know 1,000 kids in this school district. These decisions are really, really tough. Reading these emails is really, really tough. I think Dr. Russell put out a compromise, and I hope she gets five votes for the compromise. But what I'm hearing is, we should then have another meeting, and I'm not okay with that. I'm not okay with that, because we have been in high transmission rate forever in this district. We were not in high transmission rate for two weeks in July. We have five burrows. Lower Frederick has been in high transmission since COVID, only if not for two weeks. I went back to as far as the data would allow us, which means if we just go by transmission rate, we will always be masked. We will always be masked. We were okay potentially in December to get rid of masks until the new variant came. We were in high transmission. If we wait for low transmission, we'll never, ever, ever be unmasked. There are 27 variants to COVID. We know about Alpha, Delta, and Omicron, but there are actually 27 variants. And if this is an unvaccinated problem, WHO doesn't say that the world will have 50% vaccination for nine months, 60% vaccinations for 1.5 years unless the United States stop boosting. So when I say trust the science, this scares me, because WHO has told the United States to stop boosting, but now we're telling everyone we should boost. The number one and the number two at the FDA quit because they don't approve of the plan to boost children, but we should trust the science. Who's science are we trusting? That is what confuses me. Central Bucks does not have a vaccine mandate in a lot of their school, Central Bucks. Bucks County does not have a vaccine mandate in a lot of their school districts. The data correlates that there's no difference between the schools that are mask mandated and the schools that are mask choice. It's hard to say who's right and who's wrong. I don't disagree with anything Dr. Campley has said, nor emailed me about the motion that we made and that was passed last week, because no one's wrong. I don't want to see one child get sick from COVID. I don't want to see one teacher die. Mr. Jenkins passed away, and that was an accurate statement, not in our school district. Mr. Jenkins was vaccinated once, twice, boosted, and masked. It happens. I have two friends that have family members in the hospital, and what I tell my son is, "It happens, it's life." We cannot control, well, we cannot control. We just can't. I have a neighbor who has COVID. I didn't blame her, made her soup. Had another friend that said they had COVID, I said to my wife, "We got to get vitamin D, I'll drive it over to the house, I'll drop it off at their house." That's what we should be doing as a community. When somebody gets COVID, it's no one's fault. It's no one's fault. We should help each other out. If someone's got to quarantine for five days, they might need help getting food from the market. That's what we should be getting them, we should be getting them food. Dr. Russell said we'll get kids KN95s or N95s, if teachers want it, if kids want it, we should do that. That's great. That's awesome, that's what we should be doing. It's hard to say we should trust the science when, who's science should we trust? I don't know. My job is to think and listen. I've spoken to a lot of students, a lot of students. Majority of them don't want a mask. I've spoken to a lot of parents, majority of them say, "I don't care what my kid said, he's wearing a mask, or she's wearing a mask, and you should do what your parent wants you to do, and that's perfectly fine." This isn't an easy issue for anybody, because the compromise is even a little squirrely. But that's what it is, it's a compromise, and I hope it passes, but I can never vote to mask some, a student. That's just not in my purview. That's not because I don't believe in science, that's not because I don't believe in COVID, that's not because I don't think it's the best thing for the district. There are many votes we're going to take over the next two years together and four years together. We're going to agree and disagree on a lot. I think the motion should pass if five of you agree for it, but at some point, it has to end. I can only vote my conscience. I can't vote for this motion, because I don't think it's my job to mask your child. Thank you. Anyone else? Do I have a motion to call questioned? Does no one else want to talk? Call for question. Yep.
Dr. Kohler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayers?
Yes.
Mr. Saylor?
Abstain.
Ms. White? Dr. Campley?
Yes.
Mr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
No.
Motion passes.
Comments for the audience? Seeing no comments from the audience, we'll go to board. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Chad. Oh, Ms. Lofton.
Judy Lofton, Perkyomen Township. So first of all, thank you to the board, I really appreciate the vote tonight, and I know it's not an easy decision. So for those of you who don't know me, part of my day job is that I do healthcare consulting and education. And I just, I wanted to share a little story from a managed care conference that I was at a few years ago. And one of the challenges in managed care is you have to determine what are your criteria for determining who are the patients, which patients get the million-dollar therapy. And it opens up a huge range of really thorny, difficult ethical questions. And so with this conference I was at, one of the speakers, you know, as we were grappling with some of these questions of what is the right ethical choice to make in deciding how to allocate treatments, the speaker said, "If we wanted to eliminate traffic accident deaths in this world, we would have a strictly enforced 35 mile an hour speed limit. If we had that, we would essentially eliminate traffic deaths." That's not practical, that's not what our society wants. And as we grapple with the challenges posed by COVID, I feel like so much of what we're dealing with, again, it's those ethical questions of putting people with very different needs against each other really is what's happening, and trying to weave our way through that. So, you know, as we've heard many different analogies today talking about driving, and do you put on your seatbelt, and what do you do? You know, somewhere between 80 miles an hour and 35 miles an hour, that's kind of where we've wound up as a society. And as we think about how we're going to move forward with COVID, because it is never going to go away, we have to decide what's the level of risk that we're willing to take, and how do we weigh those two risks together? And so, you know, I do appreciate that there has been an opportunity for compromise, that we're listening to each other, that we're trying to balance the many different needs in this community, because there's so many different needs, and they're at odds with each other. So thank you tonight for working together to make a very difficult decision, and I hope that those of you on the board continue to listen to the community as we move forward. Have a great evening.
So my name's Tom Schmeluski, proud parent of two students inside the Perkyomen Valley. Look, I try to find middle ground, I know this is a very difficult decision, it's very divisive, I usually try to find middle ground myself. And what I want to kind of, kind of bring to you guys is, some of us talk about, let's look at the science, well, I'm going to look at the math, in combination with the science. Right now, per the CDC, 678 children have died in the entire United States, 300 of eight which were girls. The reason why I bring this up is because we're talking about every single student, not just one, but every single student. Masks, I believe, should be choice of parent, choice of student. The reason why I say this is because some students certainly are more affected than others, and I'm going to go into about the students that have mental health issues. In 2018, before the actual pandemic started, there's a suicide rate among teenagers of 13.95 per 100,000 teenagers. If you look at the current US population, there's 42 million teenagers. That, if those numbers held up, there would be 5,859 deaths committed unfortunately by suicide. So obviously, it's terrible, very sad. If you break that down further, if you did a 60/40 split, because this information isn't really being talked about, there'd be 2,232 teenage girls that committed suicide. Since the pandemic started, per NBC News, or whatever news source you want to go to, I'm not trying to be divisive, they've shown a spike in teenage suicide attempts by female teenagers, by 51%. If you take 2,323 and you times that by 51%, that is a lot more harm that you're doing to the students than COVID is. And that's, that's science, that's math. You can look it up, and I'm not trying to be divisive, because I know it's a hard choice, I don't envy you, but if I did, and I was in your, if I was in your position, I would make the choice, I'd be able to sleep at night to make sure that the students, the parents, decide for themselves whether or not to mask. For anyone who wants to wear an N95 mask, I do want to say this as well, take a look at the packaging, they're only good for two to three days. What makes an N95 mask an N95 mask is the static charge that it has. Once that static charge is gone, it's no longer considered an N95 mask. Anyone who's worked in the medical field, such as myself, in EMS, or in the construction industry, would know that, and I think we need to discuss that as well. If you're going to make masks mandated, specify which ones. Thank you.
It seems that, to the lady's point about the risk and what you need to assume, I would add to that, it has to be in some sort of context. The ongoing assumption has been, if we can only get through this pandemic, we'll return to normal. Well, we're now two years into that, and I think that assumption needs to fall by the wayside. What is the vision of Perkyomen Valley education in a COVID or a pandemic environment? What is optimal? What do we want? And what does that look like? And how do we get that? If we have that kind of vision, and that's what the board is here for, then we move away from these divisive issues of whether or not to mandate a mask or not, and we work together as a community to realize that vision in terms of what we have to do to provide the best education to our children in a COVID environment, and what are the risks that we're willing to take to provide that vision? All of that is missing here, and that's the frustration with my fellow Perkyomen Valley residents, is that the goalposts keeps changing. If we only do this, then we'll be good. If we only do this, then we'll be good. What's the point of all of this? Where are you taking us? Think about it, that would be my recommendation. What does Perkyomen Valley education look like in this environment, and how do we get there? And what are we willing to risk in order to do that? If it's not very much, then why do we have our students in the school buildings? If it is a little bit more than that, then how do we adjust to that? That's your job. That's why we voted you in. Thank you.
Yeah, Chad.
You know, I'm really just sitting back there struggling with the notion of everything that has gone along since my, since I started participating in this, you know, school board process. You know, I've done it, like I've said from the beginning, for my 10-year-old son.
Uh, you know, I've done it, like I've said from the beginning, for my 10-year-old son who's currently in fifth grade. And, you know, not to go down a beaten path, but he spent the end of his third grade year in a mask. His entire fourth grade year was either virtually or I believe some of it may, may have been masked. And now half of his fifth grade year in a mask. And the way it looks, most likely his entire fifth grade school year in a mask. And I'm still like, I, you know, I tried to talk to him and tell him why he's got to do this and, you know, explain things in a reasonable manner, but I just went home a couple of weeks ago and told him that as of January 3rd, he no longer has to wear a mask if he doesn't want to. And now I have to go home, actually I think he's watching live on YouTube, and explain to him why he has to wear one now. When I sit here and tell him that the only people and per your, you know, your matrix, it says that the only people who are showing up in ICUs or getting severely ill are the elderly and the unvaccinated. So why if he doesn't, if he doesn't want to wear a mask, does a child or a teacher or anybody that's in the school have to fear for my child if they're vaccinated and wearing a mask? Please explain that to me because I cannot wrap my head around it. And I'm not the smartest individual, but I tend to believe that I'm kind of reasonable and have a logical brain. And if somebody explains something reasonably to me, then I tend to consider it. But sitting here and listening or seeing that email that says that we can go, I can take him to a Perk Valley basketball game and he doesn't have to wear a mask, but he cannot sit in his classroom and take instruction while he's seated without being scared, makes absolutely no sense. And for you people that are all educated with college degrees and doctorates and masters and all of that, to sit up here and act like we're supposed to just take that is unacceptable to me and it's unacceptable for my 10-year-old. And the fact that I'm getting all worked up is because I'm passionate for my child. Some of you might take it as being hostile, but it's ridiculous that you guys just voted on this and nothing is changing. As I reported earlier, not a single child has died from COVID-19 or with COVID-19 since this thing began. And if you say you want to protect the community, I just heard you, I forget your name, Mr. Solicitor, say that's not your job. It's to protect the health and safety of the students, not the community. So answer that. Why are you, why are you protecting my father who's in a nursing home who I take my son to see because he's about to die? Are you protecting him? No. That's my job. That's the nursing home's job.
I didn't plan on speaking again, but I'm just highly disappointed. The facts are, parents should have the right to do what they want with their own children when it comes to anything medical. Restricting their breathing, putting a mask on their face, that decision should be made at home, not by anyone here. Thank you, Rowan. Thank you, Jason, for simply stating the obvious. I wanted to say one thing to Don as well, because I believe that you ran for a platform that was supporting parent choice. Supporting parent choice, not taking it away, you know, and, and you're, you're commenting up there that you appreciate Dr. Russell and, and this compromise. This isn't going to end. Anybody that thinks this is two more, two or three weeks, it's laughable. It's not going to end. There's nothing stating that as soon as these three weeks are over, that these masks are done. This is just another change of the goalpost. The after-school thing? I'm supposed to go home and tell my kids that all day long they have to wear a mask, but then after school, there's no, there's no issues, you're fine after school? Maybe we should let these kids wrestle in the classroom. They can play basketball in the classroom because apparently that's safe to do without a MIA during COVID. Thank you.
Comments, comments by board members? Ms. Evans-Brockett? Dr. Kohler? Dr. Fountain? Dr. Campley? If you're going to sit there, you gotta, you gotta have it. Mr. Dorr? Mr. Keenan? Ms. Mayers? That rock and roll?
I just wanted to say that the reason, like Mr. Fountain, I'm looking at this as a compromise and a way of actually supporting the functioning of our school. So when I hear our administration and our nursing staff say that they are concerned because just a few days ago, a lot of what they thought needed to be in place has been shifted, that they need a couple of weeks to plan, that's, that's what I'm supporting. I'm not, that's what I'm supporting.
Thank you. Before Dr. Russell, I'll let you go last. Post pictures of cats and dogs and Christmas trees and bund cakes and spaghetti and chicken parm. Try not to fight each other on social media. It's tough. I really want to see this community come together. It, this is, you know, the community is so divided right now and I could just imagine what social media is doing right now. So for the people that are still on YouTube and for the people that are here, just take a deep breath. Take a deep breath. You know, kill more people with kindness. That's what I say. And Dr. Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. I, I just wanted to echo some of what others have shared that continues to pose just a strong challenge for the school district and our community. And in, and it's a, it's an initiative, at least that it's something at the forefront of my thinking that I continue to focus on and try and figure out how to improve upon. So I appreciate this board and the thoughtful consideration made this evening. I, I know that the, this particular plan has not been one that serves everybody well. I believe it will serve our students well and I do believe there is light at the end of the tunnel. I am not interested in moving the goalposts again and believe that again, with vaccination, we are on our way. I appreciate the board's consideration to have this conversation this evening and to have faith in the administration with this plan moving forward. So thank you for that.
Does he have a motion for adjournment? Rule.